To order at six thirty something, six thirty one, so it's six thirty. And the role, I think all three of us are present, right? Is Talbot?
Well, you have a quorum.
That's good, okay. We'll dispense with the pledge because we're going to do it in a few minutes at the regular council meeting, if that's all right with everybody. And move right to the gifts, and I note that the gifts really fall into three categories. The library, the police, and the human services. They're not just the, you know, with human services ones that we've been appropriating quickly. Some of them are very generous from the different groups. And Rotary gave a couple of different ones. The Julia Tompkins Fund we get every year. So these are really nice. Would somebody like to move items three through twenty two as recommended for the full council?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Slokum, Mr. Jenks, are you?
Who's on the coffee?
Deckin', yeah.
Deckin', thank you, sir. That's good, all right. Anybody want to discuss any specifics on any of these? Very generous community we have here. Must be nearing the end of the fiscal year, getting all these gifts in here to blows out some things. All right, sensing you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously, this is the three voices I heard. All right, next we go to the waiver of bid and allocation of replacement for the community pool liner. I don't want to have this full of discussion right now, I think, because we don't want to make, everybody make the same presentation twice later on for the full council meeting. But I do think we'd like to get some of the highlights and some of the overview of the status of this and how it is going to go about happening. Take advantage of the fact that the pool needs to be closed for the health reasons because of the virus and take advantage of replacing some of the things now. So I guess Sean, maybe I'll open with you and ask you if you want to kind of set the table on this and move on to John and Sheila if we need.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So the short version of the request, as you have in your package, is to request a bid waiver and authorize the award of the contract to Connecticut Customs Aquatics for a total of one hundred and forty four thousand dollars, which includes, as you'll see in the quote, demolition and the installation of the new liner. And I think as everyone's familiar, you know, this is something that, again, the holes in the liner, we became aware of as we drained the pool and the age of the liner is such that it needs replacing. We have identified as a separate attachment that was sent out earlier today, funding for this project, which again includes the closeout, so to speak, of the prior pool renovation project that it was to include the epoxy decking. That doesn't get us all the way to the one hundred and forty four thousand, so there's an additional sixty seven thousand that has been identified as a closeout of five or six projects that will supplement the funding for the project. And so we have that. It's an attachment that was sent out earlier today, and we're happy to walk through that. But otherwise, that's the recommendation. And I know, John, if you want to add anything more to that?
I'll pass on to Sheila. Sheila, do you have any, anything that you wanted to add to it? Or just wait till later?
At this point, no, there's nothing really that I want to add to it. I think Sean summed it up pretty well.
I just had a quick question on the C and R appropriation balances. We go all the way back to full day kindergarten. Had a balance of ninety eight, eighty eight, sixty nine. I guess that was just laying around from some more capital type funds that were appropriated for what? Toilets and things like that in some of the schools? Is that what that was all about?
So I think, yeah, I know Jim could answer that. But yes, the short version is that is, that is from some money that was set up to implement full day kindergarten. And yes, it's a residual balance that's still there. And Jim confirmed with the Board of Ed that, yes, in fact, there's, there's no more residual upgrades or modifications that were needed on that project. And as you suggested, it's certainly a number of years old, so it's appropriate to close that out. It just hasn't been done officially yet.
Very good.
Jim, do you have any? Jim, any other? I know that was before my time.
I'll only ask that question once. I won't ask that at the regular.
I had a quick question, if I may. Are these, the company that's going to do the project or will do? Are they the low bidder on this project?
So this, again, wasn't, it wasn't bid. There's two quotes that were received, so to speak, right? So you can compare them, yeah, if you'll see. Let's see, I'm trying to pull it up on my screen at the same time here. The two quotes, there's one from the local, so to speak, Connecticut vendor, CT Custom Aquatics. The other one was, I believe, at a hun- at a hundred and thirty, in order to do it in June, it was at a hundred and thirty five thousand, two thirty. Or we could wait until August. And it was about, it was a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight thirty five. So that was the, I think, in the interest both of having it done sooner while the pool is currently closed and take advantage, but also having a local company there to back up the warranty was another reason that we're opting to go with CT Custom Aquatics. Sheila or John, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, the only thing that I'll say is also with the CT Custom Aquatics, the warranty is fifteen years as opposed to ten years with the other company.
That's important.
Yeah.
I had another question on the resolution itself, if I may.
Just, just one more thing, though, to finish answering the question. I think also the fact that we would be doing it in August rather than when we're probably ready to open up means we're probably going to lose some revenue.
Absolutely.
And therefore, the loss of revenue, in my mind, is factoring into whether we're ready to spend a little bit more money to have it done sooner so that we don't lose that revenue. So that, I, I think the dollars will probably end up matching out or maybe even being a little less by going with the company that costs slightly more because we'll be able to have revenue coming in during August, which we otherwise would not for probably a six week period, I think we were told. Could be a long period to drain, to keep closed all the way through that time period.
Correct.
Do we have a clearer picture at this point that we'd be able to open in July when this is completed?
Well, right now, from what everything that I am seeing, I believe pools are going to be part of phase two. And from what I understand, they're going to be looking at that around June twentieth. My hope is that, yes, we would be opening sometime beginning of July. That's my hope. I think we're going to have a lot of guidance, guidelines, obviously, that we're going to have to follow. But that is my understanding, is that pools are part of phase two with Jim's.
Okay.
And mine was simply a question on line two of the resolution, filling in the blanks again. Installation from X amount of dollars, it's blank. And I know you mentioned it, but could I have that so we can fill that in? The resolution says, be it further resolved, the council authorizes the purchase of a liner installation from, which is whatever the name of that company was in the amount of.
Right. Connecticut Custom, Connecticut Custom Aquatics.
Aquatics, okay.
Yep.
In the amount of one forty seven and change?
One forty four.
One forty four.
Yeah.
One forty four, even?
Even.
Yes.
Okay. No ninety five cents or anything, okay.
Is there, sorry, ask, I need to ask one more question, too. Is there a, David, you mentioned that we'd be losing some revenue. So looking at a June, or let's say a July first opening versus, you know, what, what would it be if we did the later opening or if we did the project?
It would probably be mid September before we open.
So you're talking about two and a half months.
Correct.
And how much, how much revenue are we looking at losing?
Well, if, well, if it was a normal summer, we would be looking at losing possibly a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Um, I don't know what it will be like. I know the swim teams are planning on getting back in there, but they're going to be limited with what they can do. I don't know. I can't tell you how much revenue we're going to lose because I don't know what the guidelines are going to be. I don't know how many people I'm going to be able to allow into the facility.
But on the safe side, it's probably in the tens of thousands, I would say, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think the key is it's a fifteen year warranty. I mean, that, that to me is more important.
That's worth money, too.
A lot of stuff, that's worth a lot.
And I was looking at the, I was looking at the, the cost savings between doing it in June versus doing it in August.
Well, we were also looking at with the two different vendors, I think. Maybe not. I, I thought that was a difference between the two different vendors.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right, never mind. That was the vendor we're not, never mind.
Right.
Correct, correct.
I'm just here to waste everybody's time.
No, you're not.
Good question.
Bidwa- well, bid waivers are something you don't want to always do. I mean, there's no question about that.
Right, right.
Right.
So, so those are not, never a bad question.
It's a specialty thing, too, very much, so, yeah. All right, then what's your pleasure, committee? Do we want to recommend this to the full council?
I'll move that we recommend it to the full council.
Yeah, second.
Second, all right. Sensing you've had enough discussion, unless it's something we need to know that we didn't hear, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor recommending this to the council? Aye passes unanimously, the three of us. All right. Don't go far, John and Sheila, the full council meetings in a little while and then budget after that, you know, to, for a quick go around on some numbers there, so. All right, we'll move on to the next and last, I think it's the last item on our agenda. I covered it with a motion. There it is. Establishing an unexpended educational funds account. This is something that the General Assembly has allowed, and we, as a fiscal authority, legislative body of the town, are able to authorize an account that the Board of Ed could transfer up to two percent of their monies to and that they would need permission of the council to spend. Now, the thought with setting this up is they do have a surplus that they're running this year. Most of it is due to savings because of the lack of school in the buildings and, you know, staff savings and transportation savings and others and utilities and things. But also, some of this is recognition that they are going to have some expenses in the next fiscal year because of the COVID that was not expected. Most of it related to special education in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. So the thought was, let's set this up, let them have the ability to take some of the money that they save from this year and not have to raise their budget request for next year, but rather have this as money that they save for one reason. That's actually the same reason for the expenditure is the COVID issue. And so I think it makes sense for us to allow this to happen. Other towns have done it. I know Sean has told us that where he came from, Sims Ferry, it had it back in twenty fifteen when he was finance director, and so he's got familiarity with this. And I think we don't have to talk necessarily tonight because I noticed the motions don't have the dollar amounts. But I, I think it's important that we recognize that the plan would be to allow them to put at least a two hundred thousand dollars and possibly put their whole surplus rather than have it lapse into the town's surplus. I think in the past, my recollection is that all the department's money that they don't spend lapses into the general fund and then it's appropriated back to whatever departments they, they, the town council sets that needs to be done. But in this case, I would favor at least a two hundred thousand, although there is no dollar amount in the motion. So we're really talking about setting up the mechanics of it.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the clarity. There is no, there is no motion before us tonight, then?
Well, the motion would be to set it up.
Okay, but we had some, we had some detailed discussions on framing that in such a way that the council had a lot of authority in, in how that money was appropriated. And has that language been addressed?
It is, it, it is in here. And it does say that, now, item six, any rollover funds into this account must be approved by the town council. And then it says, in the event, any remaining funds shall be deposited into the town of Cheshire General Fund. And I believe it also says that it must be allocated by the town, subject to approval of the town council in item one.
Okay, so given the fact, given the fact that we have those details in the resolution, is there an expectation this is going to be approved simply without a number this evening?
Yeah, that's great. The, the request tonight is just to establish the fund under the, and the, the governing, I guess, language behind it that will, that will inform how future deposits will be both approved and expended and therefore rolled over. I think the, the plan is that once we, because so much of this is contingent on how we adopt the budget and what the final appropriation numbers are, that upon adopting the budget, I would recommend at that time, we would be solidifying what those deposits are, and there would be additional motions with respect to the budget adoption as to how much is going into this fund that you've now created, hopefully, tonight.
But, but in the process of, of having these discussions prior to even adopting a budget, we're going to basically frame what we think is going to go in there and how we want to appropriate what goes in there, correct? Because I know that's the.
Correct, I mean, I think, yeah. I think David said it well, that, that we know that there's at least this two hundred thousand. I think it's fair to say that is money not currently in the Board of Ed's recommended budget, as it came to me and now on to you, that are COVID related. So at a minimum, they have this additional expense that they'd like to apply current year savings and then expend directly on those, the two hundred thousand. The extent to which we may do more than that, if the council so chooses, would just also be offsetting maybe what targets the Board of Ed has asked to get to with respect to their budget. So that's the piece that I think is still in question.
Right, and that's what we'll deliberate over. For example, I think they've identified more savings than the two hundred, but we may choose to throw that into surplus or whatever. Those are mechanics we have to discuss in the budget process. Correct?
Right, correct.
Okay. Okay. So I'm not going to ask any of these other questions later.
As in the establishment of the fund does not, from my reading of it, does not encumber the council to put in any sort of minimum amount, right?
It just, there's a maximum.
What it does.
Right, they, they're the ones, but it's with our, it's with our sort of, right.
We're allowing that amount. I'm saying it doesn't, it doesn't encumber any kind of minimum amount, right?
No, no.
So I guess in that sense, the answer, Jim, I guess it could be empty, is what you're basically stating.
Right, I mean, obviously.
Not that it should be or could be, but it could be, could be zero. We just adopt a, a framework.
Right, I mean, it, you know, obviously, we're, we're doing this in part because we don't really know what the future holds, so.
Right.
We want to have the flexibility to, you know, hold this back if we need to for some reason.
But by budget time, we will know the future we want to dictate, I guess. I, I think that's the other side of it. I mean, we will know at best or worse that two hundred thousand has to be spent in the summer, probably, on the special ed side. We want definitely to have that sort of encumbered by this sort of resolution, I believe.
Yeah, it also shows our continued collaboration and our continued trust, both sides of the street, willing to work together and recognize that it, it's one town and one, one education department.
Right, we're all, we're all on the center lane.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it, Tim. You're kind of encumbering it so it doesn't lapse at the end of the year.
Right.
Have the ability to use it next year with your permission.
Right.
Right, okay.
All right, is, would one of you gentlemen put on the floor the resolution?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Slokum. Any more further discussion on recommending this to the full council? All right, seeing none, sensing you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All three, all right, very good. Now, that ends our pre-council meeting, Budget Committee meeting. We'll then have a full council meeting, and then we go into a Budget Committee workshop, at which we'll be reviewing a few budgets and tie up some loose ends and a couple of reviews. Hopefully, that doesn't take us too, too late tonight because I really would like to finish the last of the department's reviews, and that is tonight. And then tomorrow night, we'll have more of a deliberative session. Sean and I have been keeping a tally of items that have come up, you know, as, as, as we've reviewed each of the budgets, and I think he's going to have something ready for tomorrow that will summarize some of the decision points that we have to make as a council and, and move on. So that's where we are. All right, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn because, all right, Mr. Slokum, seconded by Mr. Jenks. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. All right, so the Budget Committee's adjourned. We're on hold for a few minutes until the full town council meeting. Thank you.
May twelfth, twenty twenty, be a video fella conference. Ms. Talbot, roll call, please.
Mr. Borrowey?
Present.
Mr. Jenks?
Here.
Ms. Nichols? Chairman Oris?
Here.
Mr. Slokum?
Here.
Mr. Talbot?
Here.
Mr. Velliver?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
You have a quorum, Chairman Oris.
Great, thank you, Ms. Talbot. And with that, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item shown is items for executive session, and we do not have any pending litigation. And we do potentially have some personnel matters to discuss, which we'll push to the end of our budget meeting later. So we're going to skip over this item and move to public communications. Ms. Talbot, do you have anything?
No, we do not have anything this evening for public communications.
Okay.
And I will keep, continue to check during the course of the meeting.
Okay, I, I have a couple of correspondence, which I'll wait till later in the meeting to read. And I guess with that, if I could just take a second to recognize an event that took place earlier today, which I was just speaking to some of the council members about, which was put on by the Hometown Foundation, which is Bezuto's charitable organization, Rosini's Pizza and the Cheshire Police Department. And what it was, was to honor those that are working in our community on the front lines. And I want to thank Rosini's for donating two hundred and thirty pizzas, as I'm told, which were then delivered through the Hometown Foundation and Cheshire Police Department earlier today. It was a parade-like event that serpentine threw various neighborhoods of the community as they delivered these pizzas to those that are working hard to deliver services and goods to all of us in this community and to protect and keep all of us safe during this tragic pandemic. I had the opportunity to ride along with Cheshire Police Department in that event today, and I, I can tell you, I smiled, I shedded a tear. Pretty every emotion came out today, and I think that was representative of so many of them that, that did take place in this. And I know it was a little bit of an unsung hero because it wasn't that well publicized, and I think it was probably meant to be that way because they don't want to have a lot of recognition for what they're doing. They just want to get out, recognize those that deserve recognition and delivering them some food and saying thank you for all they're doing. And I got to tell you, it was a great, great event. And really, Rosini's, the Hometown Foundation, Mr. Michael Bezuto was there at the beginning of it. I want to thank Bezuto's for their support as always in this community. And Cheshire Police Department did a phenomenal job organizing this. We also had Cheshire Fire Department there with some of their apparatus and a variety of other members of the community that supported it. I think I saw that the Cheshire Ram there, Pete the Bishop from Pops was driving his convertible with the ram in it, and so many others took place in this event today. And, and I got to tell you, it was just really a heartwarming event, and I can't say enough about it. I think it was a needed shot in the arm for so many that were out there. There were kids waving and laughing and having signs that said, thank you for keeping us safe. And so many people really enjoyed the event. So I just want to say thank you to all of those that were involved. I know Jeff Falk was one of the main players and, and so many others from the Cheshire PD. And it's hard to name names, but I, I did get to ride with Mr. Falk today. And we did ride in one of the new police tajos. I want to make that mention, that, that from my perspective, it gets a thumbs up. It did a great job today. So thanks, chief, for putting that out on the road. And hopefully, we as a council can kind of get behind something, maybe a little bit down the line, to do something maybe a little bit bigger, but somewhat similar. I think this community is looking forward to, to re-engaging with each other when we can. So thank you to everyone involved, and I apologize in taking, you know, five minutes or so to address this, but it really was a heartwarming day, and I just wanted to recognize it. And with that, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. The regular meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, the public hearing of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty, special meetings of April thirteenth, twenty first, twenty second, twenty eighth, thirty, May fifth and sixth, twenty twenty. Wow, we've been meeting a lot and doing a lot of work, so.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Slokum, is your second? Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Any questions or comments on any of these minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We're going to move on to consent calendar. Mr. Borrowey?
Mr. Chairman, be it resolved that the town council approves resolution zero five, one, two, two, zero, dash, one. Be resolved that the town council approves the consent calendar for May twelfth, twenty twenty as follows. And there are numerous, numerous items, which are very generous gifts and donations from wide-ranging groups in our community. Crowd to move that.
Mr. Chair, I'll second with, with the one change that item E, Chef's Bagels, chef's is spelled with an S. Good catch.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. So that's a second with that caveat. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Any other questions or comments from members of the council on the consent calendar? Now, seeing none, I, obviously, you know, this continues to deserve some recognition between this and the, the COVID Assistance Program, which we'll get to in new business. Once again, the Cheshire community rises to the occasion and continues to just give back when we have so many in need. So thank you to everybody who is digging deep and giving back to the community that we all love. So thank you. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, thank you. We're going to move on to new business. Nine A, Acceptance and Appropriation of COVID nineteen Assistance Program donations. And here we go again, more very generous people. Mr. Borrowey?
Yes, good fortune to move the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution zero five, one, two, two, zero, dash, two. Be resolved that the town council accepts and approves the following donations totaling a thousand dollars to the Human Services Gift Account for the COVID nineteen Assistance Program. Joshua and Lucy Camp, two hundred and fifty dollars, Anonymous, two hundred dollars, Arnett Talbot, one hundred dollars, Ralph Roland, one hundred dollars, James and Beverly Lombardi, two hundred and fifty dollars, Sharon Ort, one hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Borrowey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, again, thank you to everyone for the generous donations. And with that, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to nine B, which is call for public hearing for the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty dash, twenty twenty one annual capital expenditure budget. I'll take this one. Be it resolved, the town council approves resolution number zero five, one, two, two, zero, dash, three. Be resolved, the town council shall hold a public hearing at six thirty PM on Tuesday, June ninth, twenty twenty to consider the proposed fiscal twenty twenty dash, twenty twenty one five-year capital expenditure plan and annual capital expenditure budget. And be it further resolved, the town manager shall cause a notice of said public hearing to be posted and published according to law.
Second.
I'm sorry, I did, was that me, you, Mr. Velliver? No, not Mr. Velliver, oh, Mr. Talbot, okay.
Mr. Talbot, yep.
Sorry, it's hard to see.
No, he beat, he beat me to it.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Talbot, for that. Any questions or comments on this? It's pretty simple. I don't think we have any, obviously, just the normal step for our budget process. Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to nine C. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Waiver of Bid and Allocation of Community Pool Liner. Mr. Borrowey, this is another budget item. We'll start with you, and I'm sure we have some people that want to present on this a little bit.
We do. I'd like to, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll put the motion on the floor, and then we'll ask to have a, a discussion of it if we can. Be it resolved that, thank you. Be resolved that the town council approves resolution zero five, one, two, two, zero, dash, four, dash, one. Be it resolved that the town council approves a waiver of bid for the purchase of a replacement pool liner for the Cheshire Community Pool and be it further resolved that the council authorizes the purchase of the liner and installation from Connecticut Custom Aquatics for a hundred and forty four thousand dollars. And be it further resolved, resolution amending a resolution entitled, resolution appropriating a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for pool equipment and upgrades and authorizing the issuance of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar bonds for the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of the temporary borrowings of such purpose. Resolve section one, section one of the resolution entitled, resolution appropriate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for pool equipment and upgrades and authorization issuing the issuance of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar bonds for the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Adopted by the town council on August twenty seventh, twenty nineteen, the pool resolution is hereby amended to allocate seventy seven thousand dollars appropriated for deck paint and epoxy finish and storage and lane work to the purchase and installation of a new pool liner, thereby making said section to read as follows. Section one, the sum of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is appropriated for pool equipment and upgrades for the community pool is set forth in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty capital expenditure plan, including seventy seven thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of a new pool liner. Said appropriation to be inclusive of any and all private state and federal gifts, grants and aid thereof and for engineering, administration, administrative, printing, legal and financing costs related thereto. Section two, except as specifically amended hereby, all provisions of the pool resolution remain in full force and effect, and the pool resolution as revised is hereby confirmed and ratified and approved in all respects. Be it further resolved, the sum of sixty seven thousand dollars is allocated for the pool liner replacement from funds previously appropriated to the town's reserve fund for capital and non-recurring. and non-recurring expenditures for replacement equipment. The Town Council may determine the scope and particulars of the project.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. We thank you, Mr. Talbot. Uh, Mr. Barrow.
Yeah, essentially what we're doing here is with the pool being down for health reasons because of the, uh, pandemic, uh, and then the need shortly, if not almost immediately, for the liner to be replaced. Um, it, the, uh, staff has gone and our department head and our head of the pool have gone and they have looked to find people that could do this in a timely manner. And they found two companies, one of which can do it almost immediately, the other one of which we would have to wait until August after work done. And then we probably wouldn't open until September, thereby losing a lot of revenue in that meantime that we were closed under the expectation that we would be able to open with a second wave of openings, uh, in the state program, probably in June, which times nicely because this project would be completed uh, if we go with Connecticut Custom Aquatics in June to have the pool be open in July so we can start taking revenue again and, uh, um, do a project that needs to be done with the pool empty, needs to be done with the pool closed. And we have, for tragic reasons, the pool being closed right now. And it's makes great sense financially and otherwise to take advantage of this, uh, uh, in giving to the pool being closed and and, uh, replacing the liner now. I would note that there were two prices gotten. It was not a bid situation. There were two prices received, requested and received. And, uh, one was for an out-of-state company that was going to be able to be, uh, do it in August for, I think it was about $10,000 more. But, uh, $10,000 less if it was done in August, but we would lose far more than that in revenue by being closed until then. And there's the local company with offices right in North Haven that, uh, also gave us a price on it. And that price will allow the work to be done in June with an opening in July, which again, times in nicely with what the state, uh, potentially is going to be planning on allowing for pools and aquatics to be open again. So I think that summary, the funds are coming from two places. They're coming from a redirection of a bond that was going to be for, um, some deck work. It was approved last August. The other funds are going to come from some lapsing of five projects or six projects in the capital non-recurring that were completed under budget, as many of our projects are. This allows a little bit of wiggle room and some leeway to lapse those remaining funds and then use them and repurpose them for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to add? Dave, do you want to add, have anyone add to this discussion before we get to questions or comments?
Uh, I I think the Town Manager, uh, may want to add anything to this. And then, uh, we may also ask the, uh, the recreation department chair and, uh, our aquatic director. They reported to us earlier at the budget committee.
Yeah, I think you, uh, well, you summarized it very well. And I think maybe I would just defer it to John, uh, if you want to give kind of a, your two cents on any other considerations. Um, I know the warranty piece was the other one. I think you mentioned, David, I couldn't recall. But the company that we are recommending would have a 15-year warranty as opposed to a 10-year warranty on the, on the work. Um, John, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add that piece because, uh, David did a nice job of summarizing that. I don't know if Sheila, I would defer to Sheila because this is kind of her project and she put together some really nice documents, uh, to get this ball going. And I'm really here to, to, to make sure that we support it and get it done. Sheila, I don't know if you wanted to, if there was anything else that, that, uh, Mr. Barrow left out.
I, I think he summarized it pretty well. I think at this point, you know, just I, any questions that people have?
I, I saw. Thank you, uh, everybody. Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I, I had a several questions actually. Um, from what I was looking at that Renesis, um, if we started, if they start June 15th or June 22nd, it's 135. If they started in August, it's 118. Um, so it's almost the same, actually, it's actually a little cheaper if they started in June. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is it a, a two-week project typically for, to do the full liner?
So each company is giving me a different timeline. So the thing with Connecticut Custom Aquatics, they will come in and start ripping the liner out next week. So it's all prepped for the installer to be able to start on June 14th, I believe is the date they gave her, 12th. Um, and so they'll hit the ground running and be done by June 24th, and then we can start refilling the pool. Renesis will not be coming out until June 15th, at the earliest possibly June 22nd, at which point in time they'll need to rip out the liner and then install it. So theirs is going to be a three to four weekends time period that they're going to be in there. So that's why.
They, 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 because I don't see where it gives up the timeframe in either of these. Um, so I was just trying to figure out, is, is it, they're going to take longer than, than, uh, uh, Connecticut Custom?
Yes, they're, they're about a week and a half longer through the whole process. But Connecticut Custom Aquatics can start the tear out like next week. So there, everything is ready for when that installation company comes in.
I get, I get that they're going to start the tear out next week. But, but the thing is, I mean, it's not like the pool is going to open in the next couple of weeks anyway. Um, and I'm just wondering the difference in lost revenue versus the, the, the lesser amount. Because Reno's is, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't they the ones who, who put the last liner in?
They did put the last liner in.
And was it, and how long of a warranty did we have on that one?
10 years. And that's what they have now. It's a 10-year warranty as opposed to a 15-year.
So, so we just missed out on the 10-year warranty with this?
Correct.
Um, but I thought the last time we talked that you had mentioned that, um, you had noticed these tears and rips, uh, last year and we were, you were pumping the water out from behind the liner before?
So what happened is there were tears in the liner after they did the construction at the pool, which we had patched them all or, and when we started getting water under there, I assumed that we had missed a tear. So we did go down there, we were pumping it out and everything out with the assumption that we would be emptying the pool in August to do the pool deck.
But we didn't call Reno's last year when this, this happened so to see if it was still under warranty?
I did not because I thought at that, well, actually, it wasn't even last year. We started seeing this. It was late November that we started seeing the, the water under the liner this past November. It, it hasn't been a year or so. It's been since like November that we started seeing the water under there with the assumption that we were going to be emptying the pool in August to do the, um, pool deck. And because the pool is supposed to be emptied periodically and you need to clean the liner and all that stuff. So that was a thought that we were going to do it. We did it earlier because of this whole situation that we're in now. We emptied the pool now for a number of reasons, A to save money, B to do all the, um, maintenance that we need to do to the pool. In that time, we found about 10 to 15 more tears and that is when I contacted Renesis. And I said, listen, there's tears all over the place. This is happening. And that is when they said that it's the breaking down of the liner.
And, and you were saying a lot of that happened because, uh, five years ago, when we were putting the new roof on, um, the, it, the cover was off and it, it was open to the elements?
Correct. So we, when we were doing the whole project, the thought was that they were going to, we were given a date of June that they were going to come out and do, start the construction. So we emptied the pool because they wanted the pool empty because there's a whole OSHA requirement there. If there's water in the pool, there have to be lifeguards present. It's just a whole different animal. If you have water that they're doing construction around. So we drained the pool so we didn't have to worry about any of that stuff. They didn't come in and start work until October. So that whole summer, that pool was out there in the sun, getting baked and everything else. So yes, that is.
But we drained it before we knew when they were going to start?
They gave us a date as to when they were going to start. I drained the pool and about two days before they were supposed to come out there, they started having issues. There was, um, permit issues and all that kind of stuff so that everything kept getting pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed. And it ended up being October before they came in.
Okay, I, I just, I just have a, a real, because it sounds like this was just dropped on us. All of a sudden we need 120, 140,000 dollars for a new liner. And I don't, I'm not sure, Sean, maybe you can answer this is, uh, why isn't this like a capital budget thing that's built in? If we know the lifespan of a, a liner is 10 years or 12 years or 15 years. Um, I mean, that should be something built in rather than dropped on us, uh, right in the middle of the budget hearings.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we've certainly, this is something that we've started implementing. It looks like historically, uh, we haven't had a, um, uh, I guess, uh, an in-depth replacement schedule, uh, for all the pool components. And that's something that we are, um, we've been requesting and now we've been starting to implement, uh, going forward. But, uh, you're correct. This is something that came out, um, certainly of, of left field from, from our perspective. Uh, and we are now revisiting all of those components and a lot of the repairs we've had over the last year have necessitated, um, making sure we have a solid replacement schedule going forward.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just don't, I mean, to have like repairs like this all of a sudden, I mean, that's a major repair. And, you know, last year we were getting blow-up toys for the pool when we maybe shouldn't held off if we knew that this was coming in another year, that we had to get this kind of stuff, um, on it. But that's all I have to say for this right now. But, but thank, thank you, Sheila. I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Yes, Ms. Nichols?
Um, yeah, I think I'm unmuted. Um, I agree with Mr. Walsh in the fact that we should be planning ahead for these kinds of things. And I think perhaps we didn't, we were not well aware of this. And I agree that we're trying and we should put that as first priority to please prioritize the upcoming expected expenses. I have a question about the liner. Um, if the liner has, this liner has only survived for about 10, 11 years. And we have a 15-year warranty from the aquatics company. Yeah, I, I'm assuming that it is correct that that much damage was done to the pool when it was exposed to the elements, the liner. Um, why would we expect that it would last 15 years if this one didn't last 15 years? Is it the same product? Is it the same type of, uh, uh, strength of, of plastic or whatever material they use? Um, and in the two companies that you've gotten the quotes from, are they both the same product that we're putting in there? So we're cap, we're comparing apples to apples, basically.
Well, from what I have seen by looking at the, the sheets, they, they seem to be similar. But the one from Connecticut Custom Aquatics, um, from what I'm told is made out of a slightly different material that makes it a stronger product. I don't know enough about all of that to know for sure that that is what it is. I did have somebody look at it for me and they did say that it, there was a few differences that would make it a little bit sturdier and stronger. Another thing that we have to look at, so if you remember when we first put this liner in the pool was outdoors. So even the sun exposure with water in the pool can deteriorate the liner as well. This pool is now never going to be exposed to the elements. This pool was exposed to the elements in 2011 when the first bubble came down. And then it was exposed to the elements in 2013 when the second bubble came down. It sat outside for months and months with dirty water sitting in it and no cover over the pool. This, this liner was really put to the test. Um, and unfortunately, it's now at the point where it is no longer viable.
And that, that seems like a reasonable expectation for the new one. And I would expect perhaps that this is 10 or 15 years later. Perhaps the materials used are, are even better materials than were used that far ago, that long ago. Um, I, I believe that it's my opinion that it's absolutely critical that we fix it. We need to keep the revenues up from the pool and to lose the summer season and get us ready for the, the school season coming up. If indeed that all happens, it's very smart to do it now. So I see the only detriment to this is I think we need to be very careful that going forward, we have a very, um, the specific schedule of when we may expect in the future to do any kind of renovations or any kind of replacements or equipment failures in the, in a long-term budget. So I will support this this time, um, but I think we need to plan a little bit better going forward.
Agreed.
Nichols, other questions or comments?
I, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Um, first question is, is this the second liner in the pool?
This will be the second liner.
Okay.
This is.
Because, because obviously, obviously exposure to the weather, um, occurred every year when that bubble was deflated. Uh, so our, so our, our normal pool operation, uh, did, did have a lot of exposure to the weather. Um, and I guess, um, I, I guess the point I would like to speak to is I've, I've been involved in crafting uh, capital budgets for some time. It never really occurred to me to schedule the, the life and death of a liner or any of the other equipment there. I, as a Town Council member, was more concerned with keeping the roof on it, uh, coming up with a new roof. And I think some of these distractions that took place at great cost to the public and time to the council and its management, um, is probably is just as good of an excuse as this is any. While it's not a good excuse, I, I think keeping the roof over the damn thing was more important to us than just about anything and, and getting it to be economically viable. So I think in nobody's defense, uh, we now know we have to have a formulated plan, uh, like we do for our school roofs and, and other, you know, paving projects. And I think we'll get that. We should expect that. We can promise that. And I will simply just say I support this and I look forward to that plan so we can get it right in our future capital budgets.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Yes, Mr. Valver.
Thank you very much. And, um, I have two questions. One is, uh, as, as we shift money or at least this, what, uh, the money is going to come a little bit out of the bonding, uh, for that would normally have gone towards the, the deck and the epoxying of the deck. Um, what do we see as far as timeline for that? Would there be, you know, or, you know, I know we talked about this a little bit, uh, at the last meeting. My question is, you know, if we take the money here and we spend it for the liner, what does that do time-wise and money-wise as far as being able to do the epoxy for the deck? Uh, how does that affect the timeline for that?
Um, well, the epoxy deck, we were really doing it more for aesthetics at this point, just because the, the paint. I don't, you weren't on the council when we, um, opened the building, um, with the new, uh, building on it. And we had just done the, um, locker rooms and everything else and the pool deck looked horrendous. Um, I know Rob Oris was on the council and he walked the deck with me and it was just horrible. There were patches all over the place. So we had somebody come in and paint it with the understanding that we were going to get about two to three years out of that paint and then would have to do something, um, within that two to three time, year time period. We're now at five years. Um, actually six years, um, out from when we did the building. So we kind of have outlived the, the pool deck. It, it doesn't look great. It's not anything that is going to crumble. There's not any issues like that. It is something that I see that we would have to do, I mean, I would say within the next five years. I think it's something that we should look at again doing. But right now, this is definitely, this is something that.
It's more important, right. It's more immediate. I just wanted to make sure with what, what was the level of need for the epoxy and the painting? Because obviously we're going to take some of that money that might have gone towards that project, use it for a more immediate need. And the question is, this may then obviously push that project out for a little bit. And I just wanted to get a better, make sure I understood that. And my second question is, when it comes to these two vendors, obviously we've talked a little bit about timing, uh, versus who can get it done faster, um, and perhaps who has a better warranty. But I just want to make sure, um, and I assume the answer is going to be yes. But have you, I assume someone's vetted very strongly, uh, this, this, this contractor, if we go forward with this? Uh, because obviously, as we all know, if something can go wrong with this pool, it does. And so I just want to make sure we're not going to go with this vendor. Uh, now, uh, obviously Renesis did the first liner. Uh, we've discussed the, the factors which may play into the, the demise of that liner. Uh, but obviously that didn't last, uh, any, beyond what the warranty was. And so, um, I want to make sure that this company that we don't really have a track record with is going to be a good, strong, viable company that's going to put in a liner that's going to be something that we're not talking about, uh, having problems. Obviously, we know it has a crystal ball on this, but I want to make sure if someone's looked at this company and made sure that they have a good reputation, they've done work, good work in other places. And this is somebody that we can all feel good about recommending to do the work on this pool. Uh, and so that we're not, uh, looking, uh, like this is falling apart again in a short period of time.
Um, Connecticut Custom Aquatics is actually a vendor that we use pretty regularly at the pool. That's where we get all of our supplies from, our chlorine, our pH, all that kind of stuff. They have done, um, they put the UV light in for us. They're a very upstanding company. Um, the owner of the company stands by his word and if there is an issue, I know that he will take care of it. I.
All right. But do they have a, do they have a strong, uh, history of putting in pool liners? I mean, obviously it's one thing to be a good, good supplier of materials. It's nothing to be a good worker and putting in actual the liner for the pool.
Right. So what they are, they're going to come in and they're going to prep it. And then they have an installer that works for this company that supplies the liner that will be coming out. So they kind of subcontract that. they kind of subcontract that out to this person. But this person, they, they have done business. They have done a number of pools in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island.
Okay. So you feel comfortable with them as a good contractor and someone who's going to do a good job putting this pool liner together?
I do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Got a question. Yes, thank you, Mr. Valverde, or Mr. Jenks?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean, in looking at the two, uh, the two options, um, I mean, in terms of the price, in terms of the timing, um, in terms of, you know, getting, uh, the pool back open as soon as possible so we can begin to generate more revenue. Those are all things that appear, um, I agree in, uh, in, in the, uh, in your, you know, Sheila and, and, and Parks and Rec, your, your recommendation as far as custom aquatics being the, the company we go with. Um, the, um, one question I have is, as far as the, uh, warranty, is that a manufacturer's warranty or is that a warranty coming from custom aquatics?
No, it's a manufacturer's warranty.
Okay. And do you have an opportunity to, I mean, the price is pretty similar between the two, but do you have an opportunity still to negotiate with custom aquatics on their price at all? Or is that already been done?
I have negotiated with them. Trust me, they were, um, last week, they were at $160,000 and I got them down to where they are now. So.
Okay.
I don't know that I can negotiate much more.
Right. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Jenks. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I, I have a couple of thoughts and, um, I guess I echo a lot of the same thoughts about having some forward-looking budgeting based on the age and life expectancy of equipment. It seems to me that we're very reactive with this pool and not very proactive. And it certainly, in my opinion, is now impacting our ability as a council to properly plan going forward, how we best invest in this facility. We thought we had a pretty good plan as to how we could increase revenue through the investment of adding some various components that we thought would be really good returns on investment. And now, unfortunately, we have to delay those because we have, once again, another surprise. I'm not suggesting that's anybody's fault. Uh, but I do think we all need to do a better job of, of trying to understand from a capital perspective and plan better for potential foreseeable replacements of equipment. Uh, we, we have to stop being so reactive with this pool. And I'm going to support this tonight because I think it's the best thing to do. I support the pool. Uh, I know it adds a lot of value, at least in my opinion. It adds value to the quality of this community. And I think it's the right time to do it. But, but unfortunately for me, when I look at these quotes, we have Renesas as a quote, if they did it in August, of $119,000. We're paying $144,000. Um, if Renesence did it right away, they'd be 135. So it looks like we're being penalized because we're rushing the project. To me, that's because we're being reactive and not proactive. Um, so I feel like we're just, we don't have good planning. I feel like we're costing ourselves some money because of this. And I don't love it, uh, but I'm going to reluctantly support it because I do believe in the pool. And I think it's the right time to do it. And I think potentially, we would lose a lot more revenue if we're lucky enough to be able to open. We want to be open sooner rather than later to start generating revenue that we've been losing. So, uh, you know, Sean, uh, I'm going to be looking to you to make sure that we do a better job of budgeting for this pool going forward relative to capital items. And I think the whole rest of the council feels the same way. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think I've heard enough to, to, to get a sense. Um, so I guess that's my thoughts. Again, nothing personal against anybody here. I know everybody's working really hard on that pool and you, you all add a lot of value. But I think together, we can all do a better job managing that structure. And I think we need to commit to do it. So, um, unless there's no other questions or comments.
I. Mr. Vaughn, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just if I could briefly ask a logistics issue, I want to ask the town manager to please present on the screen the motion. I want to make sure that I didn't leave something out that needed to be said, if you don't mind. Okay.
Sure. I just have it up here. Yeah.
Read. And I want to make sure, no, this is a motion that we're. This is the motion that we are.
You don't need to read any more of this. I actually think you read more than you probably need to. And you explained, I think, really well, uh, that we're using $77,000 from a reappropriation of what was already appropriated for the epoxy decking. And the balance is coming from, uh, capital non-recurring of closed-out projects that we were fortunate enough to come under budget. So the good news is we have the money to do this. The bad news is we don't have the money to go ahead with the epoxy deck as quickly as we would like, which we would think was a nice return on investment in that pool. But, you know, the good news is we do have the places to find the funds. So I think you did a good job. I don't think you need to add anything to it.
Okay. Just want to make sure we had the right motion. Thank you for indulging me.
Vaughn, you agree?
Yeah, we're good. Just want to make sure we have the capital closeouts on the record. So that's, that's why with us, we've had it. It'll be imminent.
Good.
Yeah, sorry. I just had one, one last question. The, the one thing that concerned me was when Sheila mentioned that, um, she's not exactly sure if it's the same, uh, liner that the, uh, Renesas is, uh, offering. I would just ask that you just check to make sure, because I think Renesas is a 60 mil and it has to be at least a 60 mil or?
It is a 60 mil. There's, but there's a difference. So it's the type of PVC that they use is a little bit, but it's 60 mil. It is 60 mil.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at apples, like, like Sylvia said, that I want to make sure we're looking at the same thing. Okay. Thank you.
Right. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. And one last, I just wanted to say, I, I'm going to support this, but reluctantly, as I, as I agree with, uh, the other councilmen, it's, it's something that has to be done, but I'm not happy that it was dropped on us so late in the.
I would only like to add one final point, and that's that I'm very comfortable about the vote, simply because we're also buying an extra five years on that liner. I think that's a significant, uh, reason for my vote, for the waiver anyway. So I, I think that's a big piece of this.
Well, Tim, I, I agree with you. I think that's certainly an added value, but I think the devil's into details with warranties. I've seen enough warranties that when you think you got something and then when you need it, you read the fine print and you really have nothing. So I would caution and ask that somebody who's reading these warranties, understanding what benefits we're getting under these warranties, and making sure that we're adhering to the timeframes to take advantage of the warranties. I hope we didn't miss anything on the last one, that we could have got in under the warranty and maybe saved some dollars. I'm assuming we could. Uh, but nonetheless, I want to go forward and make sure that we're taking advantage of what this warranty does, provided that we understand what it does do for us. So hopefully somebody is doing that and they recognize the benefits of this warranty because none of us have read the fine print and we're relying on you guys to manage that portion of it for us appropriately. And quite frankly, if, if, if we had known this way back with the contractor who delayed coming, you know, maybe we could have had some recourse back then, uh, that, you know, and he was putting our pool in jeopardy because it was left open and it was left open because he didn't adhere to his schedule. Had we known that back then, maybe we could have taken some action. But, you know, we don't really know it until years later. So, you know, I just think we need to stay on top of some of these things a little bit better, in my opinion.
Gotcha. And can I just add something?
Sure.
Um, so you, you were saying about, um, the warranty for the, the damage that was done from it being outside and everything else. I contacted Renesas when we found the holes after the, um, construction was done and asked if that fell under the warranty. And they said no, because it was not a failure on their part. It was due to us having the, um, liner exposed while they were doing construction. Um, so, and, you know, I know you guys are, I can understand, I appreciate it 100%. This was a horrible thing to have to drop on you. And I will tell you, it was a horrible thing for me to have to tell you guys. Um, I know that, um, you know, when Michael Malone was here, if he saw my telephone number coming up, he would run and hide because he didn't want to have to talk to me because he knew there was a problem. And and it's just the way that it's been. I've been doing this for 18 years and dealing with this for 18 years, and there's nobody more tired of doing this than I am, having to fight for this and have to deal with all the issues that are there. So it is not something that I take lightly. It's not something that I wanted to drop in everybody's lap at the time that it was dropped on it. It just happened to be that we emptied the pool now. And I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it in a positive way. Otherwise, I would have been coming to in August when we emptied the pool and say, okay, we have to do it now. Um, you know, so that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Sheila, thank you. And I, and I'm sure I speak for everybody. What, nobody is looking to, to, to suggest you did anything wrong or, or John was doing anything wrong. I just think collectively together, we, we could do a better job of trying to plan for the potential pitfalls coming down the road. Nothing.
Oh, I agree.
And stuff comes out of nowhere. And we know it in our home. Just when we think we've got something, you know, well greased at our home, something breaks that we never counted on. So I understand that we, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. But, you know, I think we can all work a little harder together to try to, you know, be a little more proactive than some of this stuff. So we can make sure we serve the taxpayer dollars as best we can with that pool. We know there's so many, but there are a lot of others in this community that are very frustrated with the pool. And, uh, you know, we as a council walk that fine line. And so, you know, I've been abundantly clear. I am a pool supporter. Uh, I will continue to be as long as I believe we're putting good money into that pool and we're getting the return on the investment. I believe, like so many other areas of our community, not all of us use it, but it does add a lot of value. And one of the reasons why people look so positively, positively on the town of Cheshire when they're seeking a place to live. So, you know, I, I have no concerns about stating publicly my support for the pool, but I want to make sure we're doing it as a fiscally prudent manner as we possibly can. So that's all we're trying to do tonight. Nothing against it. Sheila.
No, agreed. No, I agree. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something?
Uh, who's that? John?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Golick.
So, so once we, uh, once we get everything going again, and before we get into, uh, preparing for next year's capital budget, it's a goal of mine to have an independent company go through that pool, right from the front door to the back, through the mechanicals, and give us an independent report of what we're looking at so that we could develop the plan that you all are seeking. So that, that is a goal of mine. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Golick. I, I think that will be very helpful and maybe hopefully give us a little more peace of mind as we're trying to craft budgets and decide where we want to spend dollars in terms of investments, uh, going forward. So, uh, any other questions or comments? I know we've kind of beat this one, but I do think it's an important item. Mr. Valverde?
Yeah, just quickly, and I know this is something that obviously the council's talked about on other projects, uh, and this project is especially, I think, time-sensitive, just trying to get this thing done. So obviously I would just ask that, you know, uh, obviously we stay on top of this contractor and make sure that they're, uh, you know, staying within the timelines of the contract and make sure this gets done, you know, as quickly as possible. Uh, I, I know obviously there's, you know, that's everyone's goal, but I would like to make sure, make sure we stay on top of this one and, and really sort of hold the contractor the best we can to this timeframe to make sure this pool is, uh, ready when it, we, it's supposed to be ready so that at least we can try to maximize the return on this, uh, on this liner and this investment we're making in it now to try to, uh, we're, we're paying money now so that it's ready for the season. And obviously I don't want to have, be, find out it's June, then it's July, uh, and then next thing you know, finally the liner is done. We've, so that's my only thought. Just make sure we stay on top of this contractor and hold them to the, uh, the timeframes. Thank you.
Good point, Mr. Valverde. And, and Sean, I assume will, will Al Smith be reviewing this contract? Or can we make sure to, to Dave's point that, uh, it's pretty ironclad? The reason we're doing what we're doing is because of the timeframe. And if they're not going to adhere to the timeframe, then it should be a different deal.
Yeah, we will do that absolutely and make sure that it's, uh, that it's ironclad with that respect.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing more from members of the council, uh, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Anyone else who was here? I don't think I missed anybody. We'll move on to 9D. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Establishing of an Unexpected Education Funds Account. Mr. Barrow.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as I read this, can I ask that it be put up on the, uh, uh, screens? I don't read every detail word. Bore you all with my, uh, reading, but be resolved that the town council approves resolution 051220-5, whereas the Board of Education has voted to establish a non-lapsing, unexpect, unexpended education funds account, the account, in accordance with chapter 10 dash 24 statutes. Now therefore be resolved that the town council establishes an unexpended education funds account with the following provisions, and the provisions are one through eight.
Second.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. I think that was Mr. Talbot who seconded?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Okay, Mr. Barrow, we back to you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the Budget Committee met earlier this evening, and this has been a law that has, uh, enabled communities to set these accounts up. And quite frankly, with the, um, with the support of Ed is generating, some of which is going to be needed to fund some, well, backup. Most of the surplus that they're having is saved from COVID-related expenses that they don't need to expend because school is not in the bricks and mortar buildings, but rather outside. So they're saving transportation, saving some salaries and saving some utilities and all. They need some of that money to fund some additional expenses over and above what they knew about at the time they adopted their budget in February and sent it out to the town manager and then out to us. About $200,000 is going to be needed, um, in the next fiscal year, probably July over the summer. This is one vehicle that allows some of those funds to be kept in there, uh, that they save from that purpose to be used for that purpose in the next fiscal year. It gives us control of, uh, where the money gets spent and when it gets spent and how much is put in there because it needs to have our permission for that. So like all departments in town, we have the fiscal, uh, reins of things and, and we'll keep a control on it, make sure the taxpayers' dollars are well-spent and transparent where they're being spent. But, uh, this allows another vehicle by which we can allow them to encumber some funds and spend next year. And it's been enabled, uh, by the General Assembly, and it's something that they have requested. And, uh, we talked to the Budget Committee that while we don't have a dollar amount now because it's subject to discussion during the budget process over the next couple of weeks, uh, we do want to set it up. And, uh, that's what this motion does.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Mr. Barrow, is there anything else that you would like anyone to add to this before we go to questions or comments? No?
I'd like to see if the town manager has anything to add. He's actually had experience in another community with having this set up. If, if there's anything to add to what I said, otherwise we'll open it up to council.
No, I think actually you covered everything I was going to say. Um, and I think, uh, yeah, maybe we can open up for questions.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Slocum, did I see your hand? You're muted still, Tim.
That's the best way to have Tim. My wife used to say that. But anyway, uh, I, I always had the remote. Um, the, um, the thing that didn't, uh, get read, but it's, it's obviously up for our review to see, but I think it's important because it came out of our conversations, uh, prior to the motion being, uh, generated, uh, was that, um, any rollover funds of this account from one fiscal year to the next must be approved by the council. Um, that, that is a change that I think a lot of us thought was important. It wasn't in some of the original language that came from, um, the Board of Education, which doesn't particularly matter. We needed to talk about it anyway, but I think that's an important, uh, mission. Um, and that's, that's really all I wanted to just sort of pinpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Other question, Mr. Talbot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and Sean, I guess this one will, will go to you. Um, I'm assuming that Al Smith has had an opportunity to take a look at this and this, uh, meets his tests.
That's correct. Yes, I think a couple of days ago, or net, correct me if I'm wrong. I know he, uh, reviewed and approved.
Thank you. And, um, I, I guess just a, just a comment. There are certainly in the, in one through eight, there are certainly enough provisions in here, um, that, that satisfy my needs for of it. Um, I however, would not be in favor of this fund continuing, um, if and when we get back to, uh, business as what used to be normal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Talbot. Thank you for your thoughts. Um, yes, Mr. Valverde?
Thank you. Um, Sean, uh, or anyone, normally without an account like this, if the, we had a surplus, there is, is there's an obligation for them to return that to the council, correct?
That lapses into the general fund.
That's right. That, right. I'm sorry, you got to the council, but lapses into the general fund. So obviously without this, any, if, if they end the year with a surplus that would come into the general fund, this gives them an, a, a method by which, between the two of us and with agreement, they can keep some of those funds without it having, coming, going back into the general fund, correct?
Uh, yeah, that is correct. Um, otherwise, any unencumbered, uh, funds from one fiscal year, uh, do lapse and, and return to the general fund. But the encumbrance is, is the key here. In, in effect, this is sort of a, um, uh, it's an encumbrance method actually, while, without being maybe specific to, uh, an individual expenditure. In this case, it's like an encumbrance for a purpose, uh, if you will.
Right. Because, right, this particular year, they have needs for those funds, which would be in the next fiscal year. Right, because, right, this particular year, they have needs for those funds, which would be in the next fiscal year, uh, that they, that they need those funds to, uh, to cover. Uh, so when, when, uh, Superintendent Solan was talking about, talking about a 2% holdback, this is what he was contemplating at the last meeting or in one of our budget meetings, this is what he was talking about, right? This is the plan that, this is what he was contemplating, the, the Board of Ed having the opportunity to use.
Right, that's right. The 2% referring to, I think, the maximum that the statutes allow you to roll through, not that they're necessarily doing 2% recommended, but yes, that's correct. This is what he was referencing is sort of key to, uh, the path that they're trying to get, uh, with respect to the budget deliberations.
All right. And how much would 2% be? 2%, uh, it's 2% of their total operating budget, right? So that, what's the maximum amount of that?
Probably a million and a half bucks, right?
Right, just under.
Okay. Okay, but they're not, right, but they're not, not, at least this point, where they're not contemplating that. And whatever is going to be held back is something that we as the council would have to agree to.
That, that's correct, Dave. And, and remember that the, this was really driven because this year is an extraordinary year with these COVID savings.
Yep.
And, um, so we set it up with the, well, the idea of setting it up was so that we can use some of these dollars to offset the burden on taxpayers in next year's budget. Uh, but at the end of the day, if the Board of Ed has $500,000 in savings, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, the Town Council can say, we're going to, we're going to keep $200,000 of that 500 into this account that we just approved. The balance of it goes into the general fund.
General fund.
And we can take it all, we can take none of it, or some denomination of it. So it gives, I think, the council full flexibility and authority to dictate what stays in that account, if anything, and what goes into the general fund, if anything, or some combination, correct? Sean or Jim?
Correct. Yeah, that, that's correct. And, uh, and I think that ultimately while we're establishing, uh, if the council approves tonight this fund, uh, the idea would be that because this is so tied to the budget adoption, uh, there will be additional resolutions above and beyond budget adoption that will include, uh, appropriation into this fund, uh, as the council, uh, so determines.
And I think, Dave, we'll talk more about this probably in tomorrow's budget. And that's why we're not setting a number at all.
Right.
Because I think there's, there may be reasons for us to allow some money to be kept in this account. And I think there may be reasons for us not to want to have money in this account and have it returned back to the general fund. So those are conversations I think we're going to have as we further along in our budget conversation.
Right, and I understand. And that's, I think this is going to be an important discussion between us and the Board of Education. I just wanted to sort of try to flush this out a little bit for anyone who's watching this or looking at this, what, what the meaning of this would be, uh, for the Board of Education funds and the relationship between the Board of Ed and the, uh, Town Council for this topic. So thank you all for this discussion.
Remember the authority still, we're not giving up, and Mr. Slocum said this well, the council is, as the fiscal authority of this community is not giving anything up by doing this. It maintains that authority uh, the same way it always would. So I think that was critically important, uh, when we talked about this, uh, with Peter and, and Tim in our agenda prep. So, you know, I want to make sure everyone understands, we're not giving any control up by doing this as a town council.
Right, and that's what I want to get out there as well. So I appreciate this discussion.
Mr. Jinx, I think I saw you raise your hand.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we, we talked about this at length in the, uh, the budget meeting earlier tonight. And my, my main concern was that it too, you know, in councils to, to maintain some sort of minimum amount, but, um, after the conversation we had there and after hearing the comments here on, on, on measure, I think it's a reasonable thing to do and it makes a lot of sense.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jinx. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Slocum?
Yeah, I think, uh, going to Peter's question about a sunset, I, I think the resolution itself would have to be introduced another year, uh, if in fact the Board of Education wanted to bring funds forward into another fiscal year. Is that correct? So that in effect would, um, sort of re, be the sunsetting because it always would have to be reintroduced, correct?
Tim, the way I read it is, you know, when you look at number eight there that says that, that the account remains in effect until the, basically until the council takes action to, uh, you know, to rescind or amend it. So, um, it would, it, it will be in place. And Sean, please jump in and, and tell me if I'm, uh, way out of line here, but, um, it, it seems to me like this will stay in place until we take a definitive action to make a change to it.
But here's my point. I don't know if it's a counterpoint, but I guess my point is, say there's $200,000 and it's dedicated to special ed. They're going to expend those funds and basically vacate the account. That's, that's what I'm speculating. Um, and, and maybe I'm wrong and they won't expend all of it and they'll have to come back and say, I've got $50,000, we want to use it for something else. But it's not, um, it, it doesn't allow them to start over next year with a new, unless it's populated. They would have to make the motion to create another fund or to add to it. Am I correct?
The fund is, the fund is already going to be there. So even, even if they put in, you know, a million dollars this year and that million dollars got expended towards the, the P1 budget, at the end of that year, if the account was zero, the account is still in effect or available, and they could make another deposit into that unless we take action to say it does not exist.
But then that's. I, if I could just jump in here, I think you're both correct in that the difference, Peter, no, really. And the reason being is you're correct, the account would be sitting there with a zero balance. They could then repopulate it, but only with the council's approval. And I think that's what Mr. Slocum was getting at. So, yes, the account technically goes beyond the one year, bigger eight language that we're reading, but we wouldn't be able to repopulate it without council authority, or at least the Board of Ed couldn't do it unilaterally. We'd have to approve it, and if we didn't, it wouldn't happen. So I think you're both kind of right. The question becomes, do we want to allow this to continue on even, you know, giving the fact that we have control? Or do we want to sunset this at the end of one year? And if so, I think we need to entertain a, 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 a modification to this resolution, if that's what you're looking for, Peter.
Uh, I, I'm actually okay with letting it continue only because we, we don't really know what's coming down the road. And there, you know, there may be savings if, if schools don't open to start the, to start the year in August. There may be savings that we would want to go into this account to be looking at the, uh, at the following fiscal year. So I'm, I'm okay with it staying as, uh, as Mr. Barrow, he did such a great job of, of presenting it. Um, so I'm okay with it now as long as, you know, and, and I'm convinced that there's enough controls in here that, um, you know, that we can stop it at any time if we want to.
Correct. And that, that's why I'm comfortable with it because I believe the council maintains complete fiscal control, which is really what we're supposed to be here for. So that's why I'm comfortable with it. Uh, any other questions or comments? Peter?
Mr. Chair, I just, and not a, a question, more of a, more of a comment. I am, uh, a little bit surprised that, uh, that no one from the, from the BOE or administration was here to, uh, to speak, uh, to speak in favor of this resolution tonight, so.
Actually, well, I have been with, uh, Jeff Solan. I know he's available to jump on if, if needed, but I, I didn't, uh, I think he was in earlier on the Zoom call, but kind of what he's watching, I know right now on YouTube and I was, uh, just texting with him. So if you need him to come on for anything, I know they're kind of on standby.
I think we're good.
Point well taken, but I don't think we need it. Anything else from members of the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Town Manager Report Communications. Uh, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll be very brief. Um, but I just wanted to first, uh, remind everybody in the community about the COVID Assistance Program and, and again, extend our appreciation to all those that are donating. Um, and you can find more information on how to donate on our website. So I encourage everyone to, uh, to, to donate. Those, those funds are being turned around to those in need in, in our community. It's been very, very well received. I think the question on everyone's mind or where the town of Cheshire is moving with respect to reopening plans, uh, we are actively, um, having a number of conversations as we try to strategize, uh, what are reopening plans for our facilities and our, um, our, our, our buildings and our facilities and our, our outdoor areas. So, uh, be looking for some of that information in the coming days. Uh, we are, um, again, trying to decipher in many ways, uh, some of the state guidance, which is conflicting at times, but, uh, we are working very hard to uh, make sure we can responsibly and safely reopen a lot of our, uh, town facilities, uh, here in the, in the near future, uh, as we try to turn the corner on all of this. But, um, again, we're following state guidelines and, uh, we appreciate everyone's patience as we, uh, as we move forward with this. Um, and I would also just highlight, uh, the third quarter report, uh, that, uh, Mr. Jess got, uh, completed. Uh, I don't think ever has a, uh, third quarter report been so different from a second quarter report, uh, as we've certainly experienced, um, a lot of changes over the last few months. Um, but again, I think it's, it's consistent and I appreciate all of his hard work as we've, um, pulled that together. And again, as it informs our uh, surplus availability, and I know it will be just discussing more with the Budget Committee later tonight. Uh, so I just would highlight that in the, uh, in the manager's, uh, report compilation there, the third quarter report is a, is a good read and a good snapshot of where we are and how things have changed over the last two months. So thank you to Jim for pulling that together. Uh, and with that, I would just echo, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, what you had referenced today. The, um, the Bezuto's, uh, Hometown Foundation ride was just a great event today that I would greatly appreciate everything they did and everyone that participated, including our police department, um, for all the great work they did. It was, uh, it was a wonderful event. I do echo your, uh, desire to see more of those, and I hope we could. And in a lot of ways, it was a good dry run of what a townwide parade can look like. And, uh, we really appreciate everyone who works so hard to pull that off in, in such a short amount of time. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Kimball. Any questions or comments from members of the council? No? Okay, move on to number 11, Reports of Committees of the Council, Chairman's Reports. Um, Ms. Nichols? No report? Mr. Slocum? Everybody's muted.
Right, I was asleep at the switch. I do apologize. I did have a question about the police report. Uh, I realize that's not a committee of the council. Um, and I apologize, but, um, I noticed in the chief's report, there was an investigation by detectives into, uh, a, a break-in on a Wolkett commercial property. And I was inquiring about that. I know fire departments respond to other towns when things occur, and this is perhaps a similar situation. And it does not have to be answered here, nor will I mention the name of the business. But I do know for the record, it, it is a Wolkett business. So that's it. Thank you.
I will, uh, follow up on that, Mr. Slocum, and, uh, and get an answer for you.
Thank you.
And no chairman's report, Mr. Slocum?
Uh, no, no, I don't do that anymore.
You're retired from that now. Mr. Barrow, I'm sure you have plenty to say about the budget, but we could say.
We've all been saying it, uh, every night it seems. So, uh, but no, we'll have more to say in a little while with reviewing some budgets and tomorrow night, and then we'll set up a night for next week as well.
Right, Mr. Velver?
No report.
Mr. Walsh?
No report.
Uh, we'll move on to miscellaneous and appointments, liaison reports. Uh, Ms. Nichols?
Uh, no liaison, except that the library board will be meeting Monday night. So we'll be doing another Zoom meeting with them on Monday night. So.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slocum?
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow.
Uh, nothing, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Velver.
Uh, no real report, except there's one other that the Planning and Zoning Committee, I think, had their, I think that was their first Zoom meeting last night. So, uh, they are, they are back in business on Zoom as well.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned it, Dave, because, you know, that is one committee that does serve the public. And I'm glad to be able to confirm to those that need their services that we're open for business and we can assist them to advance their projects, which are probably important to us as a community. So thanks for mentioning that, Dave.
Right, and there were, and there are a few, uh, there were a few items on that agenda last night, which will be, uh, of interest and important to the town, so.
Good, good. Happy to hear that. So thank you to Planning and Zoning and, uh, that office, the planning office, for getting that going. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Talbot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, because of, uh, Mr. Barrow, we, uh, keeping the otherwise, uh, occupied last Wednesday, I was unable to attend the, uh, the Zoom meeting for the Park and Rec Commission. But seeing as Mr. Gollak and Ms. Maynor online, if there's anything that they would like to, uh, to mention from the meeting, uh, I will acquiesce to them.
John has, uh, 70 slides to present.
Yeah, thanks, John. Another 72-point presentation. Appreciate it.
In that case, I'll take it back.
Just trying to be thorough.
Um, and then, um, you know, on a, on a much different note, uh, Mr. Chair, um, from the Energy Commission, um, I learned over the weekend of the, uh, the passing of one of the members of our Energy Commission, Paul Michaelowski. Um, Paul was a great guy, was really a, you know, a, a fixture on the Energy Commission. And, uh, we mourn his passing. He will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. And certainly on behalf of the entire council in our town, our condolences, uh, to his family and all of his friends.
He was a great guy. I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you for letting us know that. I wasn't aware of that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Talbot. Nothing else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, these pictures are moving now. It's kind of screwing me up here. All right, Mr. Jinx?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, Public Safety Commission and, uh, and the Beautification Committee have not been meeting. Um, I know Public Safety is eager to meet. Um, I don't know if there's, Sean, if there's anything, uh, that, that we can do for them or, or not. Um, to them, obviously, but, uh, you know, they've been saying they're eager to meet, so I don't know, um, sort of what the protocol is to, to get them up and running or the Beautification Committee as well. But, uh, but so far we haven't been meeting in the last couple of months.
Well, Jim, I can tell you, at least from my perspective, I, I thought we kind of suggested that, uh, any commissions that needed and running and wanted to be up and running had work to do. We should be supporting them. So I, I can't imagine that Sean and staff wouldn't support that committee if they wanted to meet.
No, absolutely. And with respect to the Zoom instructions and everything, actually more guidance, we sent guidance out a couple of weeks ago, um, for, including Zoom licenses for those that requested them. So I'll certainly follow up and make sure that there's no impediments. Uh, but certainly we've given them all the tools that they need to, to meet with respect to virtual meetings. Obviously another question, but, uh, we're happy and willing and able to assist there.
Okay, great, thanks.
And then, uh, Mr. Walsh, I, I was going to go to you earlier, but the, the, uh, the Brady Bunch pictures moved and you ended up going to my bottom right, so I'd already passed you. Sorry.
Uh, I'm having Zoom issues myself. I have to tell my Sunday boxer, stop studying for his final exams, um, one or the other. I think it's the latter. Um, but no report today. Thank you, though.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, everybody. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions, Ms. Nichols? No? Mr. Talbot?
I do, as a matter of fact.
I'm impressed, Mr. Talbot.
I am, I am very proud to bring forth the first ever virtual nomination to a border commission. Um, it is the, uh, reappointment of Therese Bradley to the Cable TV Advisory House from 6:30 20 to 6:30 22. And Ms. Bradley is a Democrat.
And I'll second that first.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Uh, I, do you have anybody else?
That's it, just the one.
So we have a first and a second. Uh, any questions on this nomination? Questions or comments? No? Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to Ms. Bradley for offering to serve. Thank you again.
Uh, if I, if I may, um, because this is indeed the, uh, the first virtual, um, what is the protocol, um, Ms. Talbot, for getting this to you or getting this included, uh, for the clerk?
Pigeon.
Um, I have the information. I'll look, I dress up and, uh, I have the form, so I'll get it submitted.
If I send it to you electronically, will that help?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you're welcome. But we'll move on to 13, Town Attorney Report Communications. And since our town attorney isn't here, I'm assuming Port of Communication. Okay.
That's correct. He had no report.
Communications, letters to the council. I do have a couple, but before I get to mine, uh, does anybody have anything they'd like to read in the record?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, this is probably the only place that I could think of to, uh, say this. Just recently, as, as in the last hour or two, um, I found out, uh, with sadness, the passing of a longtime, uh, former council member, uh, Selena McCardle. She had served from 1975 to 19. Wonderful lady. Um, she got off the council just as I got on, and, uh, she was the first municipal agent for the elderly in town, very instrumental in providing services and programs, and as an advocate for our seniors herself, at that time, not a senior. Um, and, you know, it was quite, uh, uh, quite important what she did. And I, I just thought it to be remiss if we didn't, uh, uh, say a thank you to her family for sharing her with us, uh, for so many years and, and being such a wonderful public servant that she was. Was chairman of the school board at part of that time, uh, uh, is still around and, and active. But, uh, uh, just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. And certainly our condolences, uh, to her family, uh, and her friends, and thank her for her service to this community. Her husband's service. Sounds like they're a family that loves to give back. And that's what this community is made of, such great people to give back. So thank you to both of. that's what this community is made of, such great people to give back. So thank you to both of them and our condolences. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Barowey. Okay, I guess we're gonna go. Are there any other letters or communications anyone like to share? No, I have a couple, so bear with me. We don't have a lot of opportunities to make sure the public's comments are heard. A moment to read a couple of letters. I do think it is important. This was a letter that I received from James T. Naraki at seventy-five Briar Court here in Cheshire, obviously, and it says, Dear Mr. Chairman, given that I will likely never return to pre-COVID-19 conditions, and states and towns may very well face bankruptcy. I with an idea to reduce Cheshire property taxes. I write with an idea. Given that the largest town expense is the cost of operating, I embrace the technology to use homeschool learning as a tool to reduce costs. As we are experiencing, students and teachers are now using cyberspace to teach and learn. Why not during the entire school year? Question mark. Actually, I understand students spend a lot of time in classrooms using iPads and the like. For middle school and high school with K through six remaining, as is, would work. The middle and high school students can attend school in buildings but modify their schedules. For example, half of the students attend school Monday, Wednesday, Friday, with the other half Tuesday and Thursday. The following re- week reverse the schedule. This would allow students time in classrooms that need hands-on work, such as chemistry, physics, PE, et cetera. Cost savings can be realized in transportation, building utilization, teacher salaries, pensions, et cetera. Hopefully, you find this idea intriguing. At the, I would hope that it merits discussion within the elected town officials. Respectfully, James Naraki, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Mr. Naraki. So thank you for that letter. And I have another one from and I'm probably not going to do a good job of pronouncing this, and my apologies. It's from Ping Fai Guan Lock. Cheshire Chinese Medical Center, three twenty-five Highland Ave, Cheshire, Connecticut. It says, Dear Mayor, my name is Ping Fai Guan. I have an acupuncture office here in Cheshire. Today, I want to tell you that I have decades of experience in the use of traditional Chinese herbs in the prevention and treatment of epidemic disease. On February third this year, the family herbs recipe I provided to China was adopted by the National Health Commission of China and made achievements in fighting against COVID-19 in China. What I would like to say is that I am willing to provide free traditional Chinese herb services for prevention and treatment to the residents of Cheshire as follows. A notice can be sent out. Those who are willing to take these herbs to prevent COVID-19 and their family can come to my office to get the herbs, or I can put some at the Cheshire Town Hall, and you can give it. I am sure that these herbs will help you help prevent effectively the invasion of COVID, and there are no side effects. For the confirmed patients who have been isolated at home, if some of them are willing to receive these herbs, I can make the diagnosis by phone and video, and then I can deliver the herbs to their doorstep. I believe that these Chinese herbs will effectively prevent minor illness from turning into severe illness and help them recover as soon as possible. There are no side effects. All the above herbs and services would be free. Sincerely, Ping Fai Guan Lock, Cheshire Chinese Medical Center. So I want to thank him for offering those services to the community. Obviously, as a town, you know, we're not going to get involved, I think, in promoting what people should do from a health perspective. I kind of leave it to their doctors and those that advise them in this area, but I think it is certainly a very nice offer on your part, offer these services for free to those that are willing to partake in it. So thank you very much for for sending that letter in. I did get one other letter from Rob Hoynes, who was also a resident here and runs a business in town, and I'm not going to read it verbatim, because there's there is some personal information in here. But I'm going to kind of paraphrase it, but I guess essentially, he was taking a bit umbrage with the fact that we had departments that were seeking increases at a time when we had at least currently fifteen percent unemployment, probably going to exceed twenty percent unemployment. Business leaders faced with making tough decisions, working with what they have, or in many cases, working with much less in terms of revenue. And this should be no different in the public sector. He's assuming that our news will decrease from lower sales tax, residences skipping mortgage and escrow and property tax payments, and potentially no state help, as Connecticut is also in a financial bind itself, particularly for the last several years or maybe decades. Based on the numbers in the goal of five point five million dollar salary budget, sounds like a good number to spread out over sixty-one people, and I'm assuming these numbers don't include contributions being made for the lifetime pension and healthcare benefits. So as a local business owner or resident, I just want to voice my opinion and frankly, disappointment that certain departments are looking for more money when there are a lot of towns and state residents who are going through very difficult times that may last for some time in the future. My sense from the article, I'm not going to read that. There's, I'm just kind of paraphrasing, because there is some personal stuff in here I just don't want to read. But the gist of the article is, you know, that obviously, he's pushing for us to be fiscally prudent with this budget and recognize the impacts to businesses and many residences in our community. So I want to make sure I have an opportunity to at least get most of that out to the public, and that's all I have for correspondence that I'm aware of. And with that, if the term of this meeting, and then we're going to move into our budget meeting, which Mr. Barway will take over. So with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn our normal town council meeting.
Go move.
Second.
Second, Mr. Walsh, all those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. And at this point, we're going to move on to Mr. Barway. You'll take this over as we get into our further budget meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will move on to the budget meeting, dispense with the roll call, because we're all the same people, pledged we did already. The main item of business and general discussion or review of departments as needed, which, right, tonight, we're going to try to do Recreation Community Pool as a revisit for some more information and and updates, and also the Water Pollution Control Department, and not likely we'll get it to the town manager and town council. Probably have to push those off to tomorrow night's meeting, but did want to set the table there with that and ask the town manager if we are ready to go right into the Recreation and Community Pool.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, just, I think, out of respect for I think a desire to continue to review Recreation and Pool budgets a little further. I know the last, it was really our first budget workshop, a good portion of the time kind of reviewing the year and also some of the the good accomplishments and also some of the goals and objectives of the department. But we did want an opportunity, as we kind of ran short that night, to to dive into the budget books a little bit. And there's a few budget line items that even in the time since then, we need to make a few slight adjustments to. So I think with that, I would direct the council to page one hundred and sixty-one, starting of the horizontal book, the detail book. So while you're finding your way to the budget book, I guess, John, do you want to give a recap of some of the highlights of of your budget lines and and any areas that you'd like to talk about? And then otherwise, we'd just like to answer any questions that the council has.
So, um, sure. Tomorrow is actually, you're in Cheshire thirteenth. I did take the liberty to craft this budget along with Elizabeth Maine and Stephanie Dunn to just to really understand the operation and get their perspective and input. There are some things to highlight, and then I could open up the floor for questions and and other further development on some of the lines. But I did, when I prepared the budget, I wanted to consolidate like line items from the Recreation Administration side and Floration side into the Administration side, just to eliminate some redundancy and work out of one line as opposed to two lines. For instance, program materials, did you want me to go through each line, or you just want me to highlight some of these, and we can come back to them?
I think a high level, and I think council members will probably have questions. I know I have some. So if you want to do a high level first, that's fine.
Sure. So the program materials line, five, ten, three sixty-one, fifty-two oh four, was program materials originally. The department requested, and the town manager, we both recommended twenty thousand dollars. There's an increase of twenty-eight hundred dollars over the previous year's expenses. When we got Sean's budget back, the manager, town manager recommended budget, I had noticed there were some things that we were we were short on that I think that needed to be cleaned up. So going back to my department with Elizabeth, we decided to decrease that program materials line by the twenty-eight hundred dollars that we were going to increase it with. And if you go to the next line, printing, ten, the item fifty-two oh seven, the department requested twelve thousand dollars for the printing of the brochure. It includes the pool brochure, which is a joint printing. They're they're part of our program brochure that goes out. It was zeroed out in the pool budget. The town manager approved ten thousand dollars. The department made the move to a direct mail brochure, reaching most residents, approximately about eleven thousand with a mailbox versus the inserted brochure through the Cheshire Herald with a subscriber listing of just under four thousand. So we're not really reaching everybody with all the things that that we do offer. So due to the need of the increase of the copies, the direct mail brochure three times a year at thirty-eight hundred dollars per brochure, we respectfully need the full request of twelve thousand dollars. So I was just kind of playing with that that supply line, so that that decrease of twenty-eight hundred dollars, here's the increase of two thousand. So I was just playing with our original proposal. If you go down to item ten, three sixty-one dash fifty-four oh three, it's the A and E maintenance. This line primarily takes care of our hosted recreation management software that assists us with registration, reservations and financial. It's our RecTrack software with the Community Pool and Arts Place. The department this year moved to a fully web-hosted, cloud-based version of RecTrack. Apex started the move, stated that the move fit within the town of Cheshire's technology mission. Was happy to see the migration away from the server-based version and reduce the physical footprint on the data center. So the total cost of that software is thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two annually. The Recreation portion is sixty-four seventy-three. Community Pool is four thousand, twenty thirty-one, sixty-five. And having some some recent discussions with Sean, and he could talk about this part, there's the potential of moving this entire cost of thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two to Apex's budget. If that were not to happen, then the following needs to happen so that we could operate the software. My department request originally was ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which included the pools. Our actual is sixty-four seventy-three. The town manager approved fifty-four ninety-eight, so our department would need an increase of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars if it were to go this way. And then the Community Pool line is zero right now. It would need to be restored by four thousand, twenty-five dollars. The next item that I wanted to talk about was personnel as a program coordinator. I, if you remember, I proposed it to be a full-time position from its part-time hours right now. Coincidentally, within the last week, we've had a secretary retire. Kathy Ferenza retired after twenty-six or twenty-seven years of employment with the town. Her retirement is effective May twenty-second. In talking with Sean, I would really like to retain the program coordinator position and propose to eliminate the secretary position. Public Works did a great winter blitz and did a recent reconfiguration of our office space, so by keeping the program coordinator full-time, I think that we could make this work by the elimination of secretary, which means that we would move from four point five for FTEs down to four. Going forward, that would be a big savings of about, well, the seven hundred and sixty-two dollars next fiscal year. The line rental and lease dash five four oh five.
John, before you move on, can can you give me the the difference between the the secretary and the program coordinator numbers then?
Yeah, the secretary was fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two. That's what's in their budget right now. For the program coordinator, forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four.
So there is, it ends up being a savings then?
Yes.
And it is. And Peter, if I could jump in, in my recommended budget, I have funded both, right? We didn't know the position was going to be vacant, and so actually, the savings would be the full fifty-two thousand. Because as you compare to my budget, savings as opposed, as compared to my budget, is the full fifty-two thousand, if that makes sense.
Yes. Wise was the, was the secretary taking benefits?
Yes. Yes, yes.
All right. So the the worst is that that would be a wash on on them, right, Sean?
Well, we also budgeted assuming benefits on for the rec coordinator position as well. So there's a little bit more savings to pick up there that aren't that aren't included in fifty-two thousand. And in fact, we're kind of, as I have a number of other positions that we're we're thinking about, either zero funding or or lapsing for the year, some of those, we still need to kind of calculate what that estimated benefits adjustment might be.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Barway. I just wanted while we were there, I wanted to jump in.
Absolutely.
All right, so moving forward. Sure, moving, I just have a couple more items, and and then we could open up the floor. The next item was the rental lease, ten, three, six, two, dash fifty-four oh five. This was portlets. During my during my field distribution meetings back in January, this was a topic of a couple of evenings, meeting with all the adult and youth organizations that use Board of Ed fields that don't have access to restaurants. So I was looking or proposing to put into this budget portlets that would take us from July through November, and then through April through June at Dodd, Dulittle, Highland, and at Cheshire High School, just so that the adult and youth programs had the convenience of using the restroom when they needed to, because right now there isn't. So I wanted to put that in there. So there was a slight increase about two hundred dollars annually to cover that time period. And then the last one was the celebrations. The celebrations did have a significant increase. This was due to the review of, my review of all the events and discovering real costs for services, police sector duty that we hadn't paid for before, or last year anyway, because of the size of the venues and the amount of people that were bringing out for the concerts. And then, you know, should the sponsorships not be successful? What is the community's expectation? Is it still the four concerts? Is it dropped down to two if we don't fund them? With hopes that if we did fund them and we got the necessary sponsorships, that we would be able to money back and utilize the sponsorship money first. I will tell you that we did go out to bid this year for the production and the staging, the lighting and the sound. Power Station was a successful bidder. We are using their showmobile that's like the Cadillac of showmobiles, and it does offer an awesome opportunity for increased sponsorships that if we didn't have this pandemic, I was I was very hopeful and excited about the opportunity of of what kind of revenue we were going to be able to bring in. I know that Tim Weed, after the first couple of weeks of putting out the the sponsorship letters to people who sponsored last year, within that first week, we were able to get between, I think, three or four thousand dollars, so. Then everything came to a preaching hall. So that's really my highlights. If anybody has any questions that you want to get into specifically, Elizabeth Maine is on on the call too, and and we could do what we could do.
All right, John, I'd like to get an update, if I can, on the status of what you, your best guess now that it's three, four weeks later with regard to what might happen with camps, and that affects our budget, our, obviously, discussion here. Because if you do expect to be able to run some camps, it might affect some revenue for this year. But if you don't expect to run the camps, it might affect the expenditures for the next fiscal year, because we're straddling the fiscal years here. So what's your best guess now as to whether or not we'll run camp? And if we do, you know, are you expecting it to be half-full, so we'll get half the revenue and and maybe need the whole staff or half the staff? Or let's have a, your best guess with that at the moment, if we can, please?
So the best guess is that for the last couple of weeks, myself, Elizabeth, Tim, we've been participating in national calls, calls within the state, within our state organization, and we're all waiting for this information. It's supposed to be coming out on another call from the Office of Early Childhood and Management, OEM, on Friday. There are towns that are taking the position of not opening anything, not having camps, beachfronts, pulling up their picnic tables, shuttering restrooms. Beach fronts, pulling up their picnic tables, shuttering restrooms. Um, it's. We talk about amongst ourselves, are we going to be able to um stay within the CDC guidelines? I mean, right now, it's it's um, you know, we. Of thirty, which is a lot. Elizabeth kind of talked a little bit more about that, about the specific numbers. But to to stay within that thirty number um with small segmented camps. Looking at Mixville Park, Mixville Park, it gives us some social distancing. But if we were to have a rogue thunderstorm, there really isn't a place to to social distance underneath the pavilions. Uh, area of refuge, um, in case we do get a thunderstorm. Um, you get into the constant sanitation, the PPEs. Um, the monitoring of temperatures and and um, you know. We talk about it, Elizabeth and I, our gut says maybe not to offer it, but then. You know, should we provoke be providing that essential service? The camp won't really be a camp like experience. Um, so we're, Elizabeth has kind of coined the play care um type of a program for those that may need it, so. Um, she did come up with a good idea. One of our Zoom meetings, we have two staff meetings every week. Um, and we're going to put out a survey at the end of the week. To past participants and to Cheshire residents through constant contact. Just to kind of gauge the input of, you know, are you really going to send your kids to the camp? Do you want this type of experience? What kinds of things can we offer you? That kind of stuff. So um, I'd like to answer your question more specifically, but w- we're still like. A couple of days away of really knowing what the the governor and reopen Connecticut and this Office of. Early Childhood Management to see if they're going to lift some of the constraints. And then I'll maybe defer it to Elizabeth if there's anything else that she wants to add.
Uh, just the only other thing that I would add is that um, it it would incur more costs if we're operating, even if we're taking less kids. There are extra costs, like we're going to need more thermometers. Our nurse hours would have to probably go up. And because of the smaller ratios that will be mandated by the states, we won't be able to reduce staff. But we will be reducing the number of campers that we have. So that's another thing that we're grappling with and looking for some guidance from you even perhaps of the council as to whether or not you want to spend more money. On camp when we will probably bring in less money.
Well, and that that is one of the decisions asked to be made. I know there are families that are looking forward to the parents being able to get back to work. And one of the things they've done with their kids uh uh in the summer is they have gone to camp. I know my kids did when they were little as well. Look at the advantage of the park and rec program, and i- if it can be offered, it has to be offered safely. And it has to be offered uh uh in a reasonable uh uh way that it's it's a it's a full wholesome program. That really uh is a good full rich program that that helps them uh uh learn something and and have fun. Have their parents be allowed to go back to work if that is what they choose to be able to do. Um, so it's a tough decision, but right now, the way it looks is we've got the revenue cut out of this fiscal year. Lapsing into surplus because, you know, they haven't signed up for it yet, so I think a lot of that is in there. And yet the expense is still in the proposed budget that starts July one at the moment, so we really do have a balance. And it's not an insignificant amount of money um on both sides, the revenue and the expense side, so. That's something that we have to grapple with over the next couple of weeks, because our deadline's coming up. And any uh information you can give us from that survey about whether you think there will be participation or what the expenditures to be able to operate this program. Might be, I think would be very helpful.
Okay.
It's a it's a both between, yeah, between our meeting and the survey, hopefully we can get back to you by the end of next week.
Well, let Sean know and then we can get going from there. All right, good.
Okay.
All right, are there other council members with questions of Park and Rec, uh, Mr. Walsh, Councilman Walsh?
Thank you. Uh, John, um, just a clarification, because you were talking about program materials. P two oh four, and you were talking twenty eight hundred dollar difference, and it looks like it's a twenty thousand dollar. Amount, and it's a nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollar increase. Um.
So what I did was, yeah, so I I merged the two lines.
But is that, so so that's, so it's, but it's, is it a total increase on that or?
No, so what I did was I merged the uh administrative line programs, which is two hundred dollars. And from a year ago, on the recreation side, fifty two oh four, it was seventeen thousand to make one line of seventeen thousand, two hundred. And then we were proposing to raise that to do some other programs and uh provide some other materials by about twenty eight hundred dollars. But then when Sean's budget came out, uh, and we saw that there were some shortfalls and some other lines that we really need. The print brochure and then the uh rec management software, the rec track. Um, we decided to reduce that so that we could at least, within that proposal, take care of those two other lines without increasing our budget.
And so so then that's actually even a line item that if we don't have the camps, then that would probably decrease as well, correct?
Elizabeth, you know me on that one?
Some of our camp expenses, because we have to have the supplies to start camps within June, so we purchase our supplies the year. So right now, we should be making our orders for this camp to get all of our crafts and the new equipment that we need to run camp. That's when we make our last purchases and um our staff shirts for our summer camp. Um, th- those are the kind of expenses we usually put in at the tail end of every fiscal year to get us through, because the camp starts in the current fiscal year.
Are they dated shirts?
We. Hmm?
Are they dated shirts?
Well, the staff gets here, so that we identify them, but this is looking at um camp twenty twenty one, actually, these expenses.
Okay, so, okay, so so you, so next year, there might be a decrease if we don't have campus here.
Uh, if we don't have camp this year, this year's expenses, the current year, the one that we're living in right now. Will will freeze. Um, however, hopefully in the summer of twenty twenty one, we will have a regular full camp and will need to spend the money to run summer twenty twenty one.
So so we'll have a, okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, other council members' questions? Uh. I don't see any, so then I, all right, I thank you very much. Uh, can we move on to the pool uh portion? And I understand we have a update on some staffing potential there as well. Uh, Mr. Kimball?
Um, respect to um the pool budget, you can flip to. Uh, page one seventy one. Um. Yeah, maybe not a specific proposal, but I think as we have to grapple with um, you know, the amount that we have budgeted in the. Um, the pool subsidy, as we call it, I mean, we are going to have to take a tough look, current staffing. Um, assumptions that we have in in the proposed budget, so. Um, we are giving consideration, as you know, these positions are um, you know, currently in a furloughed status, and we have to take a look at some of these positions as whether we can do. Um, with with fewer, and then also, again, we're also having to uh certainly consider. Whether and hopefully will be open on July first, but uh we are, we are taking a close look um at a number of these items. I think one position that we're. Um, just trying to determine what we'll be uh doing when we come back is is the head lifeguard position. Um, and whether there's a way we can balance that position against some of the other um. Positions that are currently funded in the budget, so um, that's one area that I think we're giving some some look to as we're trying to. Determine what the uh the pool budget's going to look like going forward. Um, but again, it's all going to kind of determine, it's going to be determined by how much we feel we can um. Uh, subsidize from the general fund as where that number is approached four hundred thousand, uh, just in the budgeted number. Um, not to mention, of course, the the closer to six hundred thousand that we're having to uh account for this year with the closure, so. Um. I don't have any specifics other than that, uh, but I think that's the general overview. I don't know if you have any other questions on the pool um budget.
Do other council members have other questions with regard to the pool? All right, seeing none, sensing you're ready to move on. Thank you very much, uh, Park and Rec people. I appreciate it. It's been a long night for you with the other items on the agenda. You were there for the full council. We appreciate your time and your dedication and your effort. Thank you. Um, we can move on. Uh, we can move on to uh the Water Pollution Control Department. I see uh. Ice faces here. George, yeah, George, okay, good. Nice old wall. There, okay, there we are. Good. All right, Mr. Bowery.
Everyone moves around when people leave.
Interestingly enough, all right, uh, I guess, Sean, I'll ask you for an overview, uh, i- if you want to start the discussion. We did have some open ended items uh of the enterprise fund that. Uh, we had some question from the last time, I think, that we want to tie up loose ends here.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I think um, well, I'll kick it actually to George, I think, if you could just give us an update, George, on the electrician position, I think was the first that we were going to discuss. Uh, and a few others. So, George, you want to just overview that based on, and I know we sent along to the council um. Some of this material via email, so hopefully you've had a chance to get that um as well, so uh we could reference that, George. Go ahead.
Sure. I I don't know if you can screen share that uh spreadsheet, Sean, but that would um, that'll be a big help.
I can, yeah, sure. The the position one first, I assume?
Correct, sure.
All right, give me one second. You can start talking.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Uh, um, we we went back and costed out the uh several positions, but in this case, the electrician position going from uh thirty to forty hours. That was requested at the last meeting. Um, and uh, once Mr. Kimball brings that up, I can give you, give you the rundown. Um, it was. The. The net result um. Was about a twelve thousand dollar addition. Uh, the the position itself obviously would would go up uh. About twenty five percent over uh between benefits and salary. And then uh Scott Hallier, our treatment plant superintendent, predicted about a nine thousand dollar overtime savings if the electrician can. Move between operator duties and and electrician duties, so, but the net, the net is still an increase of. Twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. Um. So that's the the bottom line there.
So you're saying on page one twenty seven of our budget book, line fifty one oh five is overtime. That could be thirty six thousand instead of forty five thousand?
That's, that is correct. Let me just double check.
That's another step in the right direction.
Right, yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't pay for itself, and I know in this budget climate. Particularly, every, everything is has got to be very much uh self sustaining. So we've. We can't get there and and uh I know he's being, he he's, he doesn't want to promise something he can't deliver for sure. Uh, so, uh, but that is correct. We, the the overtime would would go down by by that nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
I I had a question.
Yes.
Thank you, it's Tim. Um. I I asked a question last week when we upped this, um, and I think it was misunderstood. And it had more to do with um the position of an electrician. Uh, I mean, I I call an electrician, it's because they can work with electricity. Um, and. Spreading out his duties, which is fine. I'm sure they're all sophisticated and they're all this and they're all that. The answer I got was, well, they're all in the same union, and that's not really. That's not really my question. My question is, um, is this an appropriate use of an electrician? And I go back to my memory, which could be lapsing, but I I thought initially, years ago, Public Works had an electrician. And he may have been underutilized. He was only used once in a while, and he ended up splitting his duties between uh Public Works and uh. The treatment plant. Now, maybe that's foggy memory, George, maybe it's not. But what does Public Works have an electrician? And does this electrician, well, and if not, does he end up doing work in the Public Works Department also?
Um, Public Works does not have an electrician in the in the building department uh or anywhere else other than the plant. Um, and it hasn't in my sixteen years, so.
Okay.
They very well may have in the past, but it predates me.
Well, maybe what I'm recalling was maybe this guy was working twenty hours, and that's how he went from twenty to thirty. Um, maybe that's what I remember, and and foggy memories from Tim Slocum is not a problem. I I get that. But I I I think this position was at one time probably twenty hours, and we went to thirty, and now we're going to where he probably belongs to be. But I just want to make sure you really can utilize and and get the functionality out of this guy um and and meet your meet your needs, that's all.
Sure.
Without a gripe, without a union gripe.
Sure. I I think I think you're correct about the the initial hours, that it was probably twenty at one time when when Dennis was the superintendent way back when. And then uh this has moved up at some point. Um, yeah, my. This this electrician is kind of a heavy duty electrician, so it's not your typical residential type person who puts in outlets and that sort of thing, although I'm sure he can, I I have no doubt, but. He's more of a a heavy duty switchgear kind of guy, generators, you know, three phase. Things that come into these large motors that have to move the the flow around town. Um, so he's a. I don't, I don't want to say a pigeonholed into that, but he's a very skilled person in in those kind of big switchgear type. Um, so we we don't use him a tremendous amount over on the on the building side. Um, largely because he's thirty hours and and he's pretty well spoken for at the plant. He he does a lot of troubleshooting, I know, and and uh just kind of um. Upgrades to the to the various switchgear around town. Um, I I don't. I I won't speak to the union issues directly, but I I think if he's licensed as an operator, there there's. An operator is an operator, and and that, I don't think that's a a big issue at that point.
Okay. And he's flexible. The bottom line, he's 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 amped up. He can do the 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 biggest electrical work that we ever have to have done in a plant or some of the, you know, pump stations. Uh, but he can also perform the other duties, which are, could you tell me what they are?
Sure, well, yeah, the operators generally go around and and check the pumps. They they make sure the flow is is. Accurate and correct going through the plant. You can't, obviously can't have a torrent of water going through the plant at once, so they they meter that, they clean the pumps, they they go down to the wet wells, check that. The pumps are clear, that they, there's no issues, they at times exercise and make sure that they're they're ready to go if there's a power outage and and things like that. They do even things like light maintenance, like mowing the pump stations and do light painting occasionally or or things like that, fence repairs, something something fairly minor, like those sorts of things.
So essentially, they're all skilled operators and we're just uh giving this electrician a broader. Depth of stuff he's already been doing on an overtime basis.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And there are different levels too. I mean, so I mean, he would be performing in addition to the electrician, like the lowest level operator. Um, you know, uh, duties and and then then there's other operators that are higher classifications that can do more stuff.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, Councilman Walsh.
George, um, for this electrician with. Some electrical work that we had to farm out in the past year that because he was only on a part time basis, we had to pay an outside contractor to do the work? Or did we just, because he was only at thirty hours, we just paid him the overtime? I'm just trying to see is, was it, was there some stuff that he he wasn't capable of doing that we still had a, that we had a farm out, or? Did he just handle it overtime basis?
Um, I'm I'm not aware of anything we farmed out directly, but I'll, before I answer that definitively, let me check in the morning and I'll I'll get you an update on that. Um, and and he he hasn't been called a tremendous amount for for overtime for electrical work that I'm aware of, but again, I'll. I'll I'll get you the exact hours and everything for that unless Walt has a better handle on it.
So with the overtime that we're saving, though, the nine thousand dollars that we're saving in overtime, I thought would have been. Uh, what was basically going to him or others who did electrical work, correct?
It's it's the others, other operators of our plant, so it's kind of a a conglomerate it all together. Okay. Between the electrician, the operators.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other? Council members with questions or other updates? Anybody wants to give us on this? This covers the outstanding questions we have. Oh, Mayor Orr, sorry, Rob.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bowery. Uh. I'm struggling with any positions in this environment, any add on positions with more hours, et cetera. And what I'm really struggling with is I'm not sure how reliable this overtime number is. I know last week, there were no overtime savings, but yet you were asking for more hours, so I assume you went and rehoned your numbers, but. George, you know, how can you, I'm not sure I'm going to support it, even if you can commit to the nine thousand dollar savings, but. I guess I need to know how certain you are that we're not going to say, well, the overtime really didn't save us much, but we added to the position. So how how can you guarantee this council that we're going to see at least nine thousand dollars in overtime savings?
Sure, well, I um, I I asked our superintendent, who who uh is well versed in these things, to to go back and and check his numbers. That was my my direction to him. Um, and I I told him that. That was my, my direction to him. And I, I told him that absolutely be, be conservative with the number because we had to support it next year, right? I didn't want to come back before the council or, or ask him to come back and say, oh, we had a, you know, a, a year where we had $45,000 in overtime and this position was, was upgraded. That obviously is a, a complete fail, which nobody wants to be involved with. So, I, he, he felt confident that the $9,000, $9,000 was a, a fair amount of overtime he could save based on his usage. The caveat is, of course, that some of this overtime is, is unanticipated. In fact, a, a good-sized chunk of it, it depends on that there's programmed overtime where the, the plant is manned is, has the ability to be staffed 24/7. So, on the weekends, there's, there's some programmed standby pay and overtime for operators to come in and, and check the pumps and check the, the SCADA system, the big board that tells you what's, what's wrong and where, or if everything is going well. And that's scheduled overtime, obviously, that, that all, all comes out of this overtime budget. But then there's the unscheduled overtime, when you have an alarm at a pump station at two in the morning, or you have a sewer main that's plugged up by grease or something like that, or some kind of blockage, and they have to bring the jet truck out and go, go clear it out, or a manhole cover gets popped off by a eighteen-wheeler or some, something along those lines, and then you're into obviously unscheduled overtime. So, that's the hard part to predict. But Scott, Scott felt confident in that. I, because of the unscheduled part of this, it, it's a, it's a hard target to make. So, it's, I, I'm not going to stake my reputation on this because of that, but...
No, I, I get it, George. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk either in trying to hold you to something because I know overtime is uncertain events in, in, in a lot of cases. But nonetheless, I think you can appreciate the fact that adding hours in any department in this environment is something that I'm personally struggling with. And unless I feel as though there is the absolute appropriate return on investment of taxpayer dollars relative to these additional hours, I'm not supporting any more hours in any department in this environment. That's, that's just me with my vote. So, you know, to me, this is a particularly tough year, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking a little harder this year than ever before. So, I'm not sure where I stand with this, but I guess I'll let you know at the end of the day. Thank you.
And I understand, and that's why I opened up with it, it does not pay for itself. We, we have to be upfront about that. It's, you know, if it paid for itself, and we could say with, with confidence that, oh, sure, this is, this is actually a win, or somehow it, it paid, it paid dividends, then it's great.
So, to your point that if we can get by without it and we're in unprecedented times, and you just admitted that there really isn't the appropriate return on investment, I'm not sure why we're talking about this.
And I'll leave it up to the council, it's, it's obviously your decision.
Thank you, George, appreciate it.
Councilman Jenks?
Yeah, thank you, David. So, one, one thing jumped out at me, George, on the line 5302, the utilities line, electricity. So, that's, you know, after, after salaries, that's obviously a pretty big expense. I'm curious, so 2019, it was 484, and now we're down to 398, which is good. Do we think that there may be increased electricity usage due to kind of everyone being home as, as far as impacting the water pollution control process? Would there be an increase in electricity because there's a need for more of water pollution control, or no?
I'll just jump in there, Jim. The, the biggest change you see there has to do with the virtual net metering credit we got for the solar field.
Okay.
And that's what knocks like $60,000 out of the electricity, you know, it's a credit we get towards electricity at the plant. So, that's why that went down so much. As far as flows at the plant, now, actually, I'd say for, you know, March and April, they are very similar to what they were last year. So, I, I mean, I don't see a, a significant impact, you know, on, on the plant or the electricity use at the pump stations or whatever.
Okay, okay. So, we can be pretty confident in that 398, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other council questions? Seeing none, then I will say, George and Walt, appreciate you staying late and coming back again to tie up some loose ends here.
Dave, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, Rob.
Maybe I missed it, but were, were we going to talk a little bit more about the town engineer position?
Absolutely can, sure.
If, if, George, if you can just kind of, because that, that obviously is, is a big change, and I understand why we're asking for it, but again, kind of to the same thread that I just mentioned, you know, I'd like to know a little bit more about the real benefits of taking this in-house, adding this full-time. What alternatives would we have to hire outside and what the fiscal impacts are of that if we did that for some period of time to get through the pandemic? I'm just wondering what alternatives we have to this.
Sure. I'd, I'd be happy to talk to that. Again, Mr., I know Mr. Kimball's searching for the, the spreadsheet that we did. And again, we, we costed this out so that the council can see this is a, a full-time, well, the first, the first column with numbers in them are, are our current town engineer at about 28 hours a month, which is, is obviously a, a much lower rate than what we would be requesting. So, that comes out with benefits and everything else to about $26,600. And then the, the second column is the new town engineer.
I'm sorry, can I jump in? Because I, I, you just made a relevant point that I don't want to forget about. So, I know with Walt, we're getting, you know, very part-time hours, and we're losing them unfortunately. It would, how many hours did you say it was, the 23,000?
He's, he's contracted, he's contracted for 20 hours, that's what we had hoped. It, it works out to about 28 hours a week.
Okay, per month, per month.
A month, yeah.
So, I guess my question would be, you know, obviously, we're jumping to a full-time position and it adds a lot more money. And then when you look at the assistant engineer, adds another $14,000. So, between the two, we're up at about $145,000 of additional spending. What options would we have, you know, I'm not sure there's another Walt out there, but, you know, that's willing to do this for these kinds of hours, but I assume you could hire a firm to dedicate 20 hours a month or 28 hours a month, and what would that cost us relative to what we're here for an engineer? Have you looked at that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have, and thanks for bringing it up. We, I have a little sticky note with my notes on it here that I'll, I'll share with you. So, the one option obviously is a full-time town engineer, which you see in front of you here with that about $128,000 upcharge, depending on, on what the final tally is negotiated for the engineer. Another option is we could try to find, as you said, another person similar to Walt, who most likely would be a retiree. There's, there's no other Walts out there, I'm pretty confident, but maybe somebody who, who can stand in his shadow a little bit, but probably a 28-hour position. So, we'd get them four days a week, some, somewhere in there, so you could take 20% off of this, this number, something like that. And possibly, they wouldn't, if they had the right deal where they retired from, they wouldn't want benefits. So, that would eliminate another $20,000 off it, just in general terms. A third...
You're saying to replace Walt with the next Walt, it would only be a 20% reduction from what you have in the full-time position?
Correct, because you go from 35 hours to 28. So, it'd be a, basically, one, one day a week removal. You could take...
George, I think he's referring to the comparison to the current weekly versus monthly.
You've been working way too cheap.
I, I think the confusion is, when I, when I was first there, I was working four days a week. Okay, now it's four days a month. So, I think when George was just talking, I think he was talking about a four-day-a-week person, say, instead of a full-time.
But I, I, I get that, but, but we don't have that right now, and Walt's working 28 hours a month.
Correct, correct.
And is it working or not working?
That's, I, I think Walt would tell you, that's a little light for, for the demands of the job.
And getting by with a cost of $27,000, but we're barely getting by. And I guess my concern is that we're jumping from 20. I, I understand the potential need to jump this. I'm just not convinced now is the right time in light of what's going on. So, I'm trying to better understand, can we get through for a period of time with something well below 154? We're going from $27,000 all the way to 154. That's a big jump. And so, even if we're partly, maybe we're 90% of where we'd like to be, you know, that extra 10% isn't that big of a differential. So, I, I really just need to get a better understanding of this.
Right.
If I don't mind jumping in, you know, and I, I'd put together a, a spreadsheet on this, and, and it really wasn't to be self-serving or anything, but, you know, I, I think especially in these times, I think the benefit to having somebody full-time is that you're going to be able to take advantage, and I'm sure there's going to be grant programs coming out to help stimulate the economy. I'm sure, you know, there's going to be a need to do as much stuff in-house as we can, and, you know, also to kind of push for, you know, savings going forward. And, you know, truthfully, I, I'm looking over the last seven years, I mean, we really got about $17 million of grants, did about $450,000 of stuff in-house that we would have had to farm out, and, you know, saved another $450,000, you know, out of the, out of the operating budget with these things. And, and I really think it's the type of thing that it's going to be very important to have somebody there doing this to try and, you know, basically to help kind of save money rather than cost money. And so, I, I really do feel very strongly that way. I will say that, you know, when I was four days a week, you know, that, I think that was a good marriage. You know, one, one day a week, it, it really doesn't cut it. I mean, there's, there's no question about it. I've come to that conclusion that, you know, that was something you're going to have to do. Unfortunately, I've reached a point in my life where I don't want to volunteer to do it. But, so I'm not, not pushing for this position for myself. It, it's just to really be able to help George out and, and the department out, and, and more bottom line, help the town out and actually save money in, in the long run.
Sure.
So... Isn't there also an elimination of a assistant town engineer's position? If I'm looking at the staffing, it's showing that there's going to be, that, so isn't that helping to offset some of this?
Exactly. I mean, you, you really are, I mean, right now, you have an operations manager, assistant town engineer, and a tech, and then me, 20, and basically, you'd be getting rid of the assistant town engineer. So, you really are eliminating, it's, you know, you'd really still have three positions instead, you know.
Although from a, right, but from a cost standpoint, it, it...
It's an operational...
...paying for stuff because it's, we're moving that over into the capital projects manager.
Right.
It wasn't really a one-for-one from the assistant engineer to, to the town engineer from an offset standpoint. Within the engineering division, if you will, it would be, it would be, it would be a change that way. But from the overall budget, that position isn't eliminated, it's actually been moved over to a capital projects manager.
I had a question, if I may. Walt, this probably goes to you, and it's based on sort of your presentation of, of, you know, how you've written for grants and how the town's got this and that. When we write this job description, should this position, you know, be put in the budget, are you gonna, are you gonna write the job description? I, I mean, I'd be very concerned that we've got an engineer who's a great structural engineer and doesn't have a right for a grant and understand grants. But you obviously have skill sets which have been valuable for the town. And is that universal among the community of engineers that we'd be able to get? I mean, we looking at something that might surprise us?
Well, I, I, first of all, I'd be happy to, you know, help, you know, help write the, or modify the existing town engineer's position. I don't think, truthfully, it's in there right now, but it, it would be easy to add. And much like any, any skill set, you know, you have folks that, you know, are, are more skilled at certain things and less skilled at certain things. I mean, you may have somebody that's a more qualified technical engineer, but, but lacks, you know, skills or initiative to try and pursue these, you know, grants or, or ways to save money. And, and I think you really want that marriage, you know.
Yeah, I, I know I do, and, and I just wonder if, I wonder if this just needs a little more examination as to, you know, if we need, you know, specific targeted engineering skills, well, that's one thing. But if we need some manager who's also getting the other stuff done, I just don't know if we get that in one package, and I'm not advocating for two positions. I just really want to know that we're going to get in the one position what we need. I guess maybe that's just a happy hope.
Yeah, I, I think you can do it. I do, you know.
Okay.
Sounds to me, Tim, like you're making an argument for hiring an outside firm.
Well, I think it's a good reason to look at it. It's a good reason to look, and maybe will drive up the cost of that side of the equation. That I just don't know. I don't know.
I, I don't know either. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to be so negative on this at all, but it's a big uptick, and, and I haven't heard enough yet from my perspective to make me comfortable. So, hopefully, somebody on Public Works is going to give us more information to make me comfortable.
Sure. Mr. Orr, if I could, if I could finish my reply to Mr. Orr. So, I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to give you the rundown of what, what the options are. So, as we discussed, the full-time engineer, that's, that's the, the one we just saw. We could have a 28-hour-a-week engineer, which is about a 20% savings off that, that, what we showed in the spreadsheet. And then if you, as I said, if that person didn't take benefits, that's another $20,000 off of what's left there. So, that might be a $45,000 reduction from what you see in the change. The third option is, as Mr. Orr said, a consultant. We did cost that out. We, a, a lot of the work the consultants do is, is plan review related for planning and zoning, wetlands, different, different, a need for those reviews. And, and they'll obviously, as, as was said earlier, they'll look at grants or they'll reinforce that we need in a technical manner. Based on that, we, we put a number on it, about $40,000, $45,000 for those services based on what Cheshire normally uses a, a year for those, those types of hour. And then the fourth option, which I, again, I have to be straight up front with you. At one time, there was a combined public works director, town engineer position. There were more deputies in that scenario than, than what, that's another option that you could have the two. I, I'll go on record that I don't think it works as well as, as what we have now, but it is, it certainly is an option that the, the town can look at at their, their pleasure.
Wouldn't you have to resign?
I, I probably would, but...
And I don't like that idea, just, just to put it out there.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'll do it, I'll do what's best for the town.
Well, I remember that first conversation, and then Walt was the answer to all our prayers.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Walt's deserting me, so...
All right. Further council discussion? Certainly, this issue is not wrapped up yet, but I'm scrolling through and I don't see other council hands up. All right. Well, then, sensing we're ready to conclude for, for now with the public works area. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming out and staying so late. Walt and George, greatly appreciate it. At this point, we're after nine o'clock. I'd like to suggest that if there's no objection, we take the town manager and the council budgets, which we're going to be tonight, but the first thing tomorrow. And then we'll get into talking about maybe a summary of some of the items that we have talked about, cumulative list of decision points we need to make with regard to general town government tomorrow after we get those two budgets in. I do want to ask the mayor, Rob, I want to ask you what your plans are for timing with the Board of Ed, because we called the meeting for 6:30. Are they meeting with us at 6:30 to go over personnel updates at the beginning? Or do we start with the budget stuff and they come in later?
You know, it's a good question. I don't have an answer to that. Sean, did you talk to them about which was best for them?
I have not. I, I know, have you, I was trying to pass this on, but I know we were trying to schedule this for tomorrow.
Getting together, I just don't know whether we're going to do it. I think we can do it either way, whichever is more available for them, which would they...
Right, that's correct, yeah.
Whatever works for them, we'll work around it. But my goal for the budget portion of tomorrow then would be that we have the town manager and the council budgets get reviewed, and then we'll start reviewing the, a compilation of, of decision points and, and items that we brought up when we reviewed the various departments.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Sounds good.
We're ready to start getting our decision points up on the board so we can start slicing and dicing. And Mr. Talbot must be looking forward to that. That's, that's always one of his better areas.
Good to know.
Yeah, so he, he's always good at that. That's, that's, he's the best in his head keeper of the numbers that I know, so... So I I guess, Sean, you'll just let us know when the Board of Ed wants to go tomorrow. It could be early or late. I suspect they'd probably rather go early.
Yeah, I suspect so.
If they want to do it right at six thirty, we can do it then and then go into our budget meeting.
Sure, play that that option and and circle back with the.
It may be a quick call because they may not have much to report. It's really just to make sure that we stay in cognitive basis to get an update. And then we've got to go into executive session as well. Right now, I imagine, Dave, if you're pretty much ready to wrap up.
We are.
Okay. So with that, then, I guess, you know, I'd be looking to entertain a motion to go into executive session to include our town manager, assistant town manager, and is Lou on the call?
Yeah, he is. Yep, yep.
Okay, is that it?
We just have to get Mr. Gallagh to leave.
He gets to go home.
We got to wait till we're off.
I think they'll all gladly get off the call.
He can go off, too, I think.
Good night, everybody.
George is simply going to resign. I mean, the poor guy's looking at the lawn ad already.
Well, he was reading his own obituary. What could I say?
I hate to say it, but is that is that like subliminal that you're telling us something? We should be looking for a replacement? Are you going somewhere?
No, I'm I'm not planning to, but but again, you know, depending on what the council decides, I'll I'll do what's best.
Well, I I don't think the council's looking to do anything with you, Mike. The question is, I'm wondering, are you looking to go somewhere?
No, no, I'm I'm happy.
Count on that. We can't count on the overtime, but we can count on that. I appreciate it.
We we can't let you go till you work on those flags, so Route Ten, so thanks.
Yeah, we we put a bunch of them up today, so the the guys were out there putting them up, so we'll we'll keep working it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good night, everybody that's that's leaving the call. So I don't know, did we get a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Second, Mr. Borowey, favor.